Call the meeting to order for legislative session 2018, 10, Wycomico County Council, May 15, 2018. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Leagues, please do.
Our Father, and
Good Lord, heaven.
Hallowed be thy name. Thy name be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and we as not in temptation, but deliver us from evil, and from power and glory forever. Amen.
Hallelujah. The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'd like to entertain a motion from council to approve the legislative minutes from May 1, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from April 17, 2018, in reference to the water and sewer plan amendment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from April 17, in reference to the RISE Zone designation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from April 17, in reference to the college promise scholarships.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes approved. At this time, we open the floor. Vice President Dodd has presentations and proclamations for the National Police Week and National EMS Week. We have distinguished guests here, I'm assuming, to receive these. Sheriff, how are you doing?
I have Louie Day, Sergeant Burley Williams, in the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Sergeant. Appreciate you being here.
Captain Todd Richardson, Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
He's gonna take a picture. Then he's gonna superimpose himself, I guess. Well, this is National Police Week, as the President stated, and it's an honor to read this proclamation for our colleagues over there at the Sheriff's Office. Proclamation for 2018 National EMS Week, Wycomico County Department -- wrong one. Here a second. 2018 National Police Week, and I'll tell you why I did that. Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed this week, May 15, as National Police Week, to pay special recognition to those law enforcement officers who lost lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas, National Police Week is collaborative effort in many organizations dedicated to honoring America's law enforcement community. And whereas, with nearly 150 years of service to the citizens of Wycomico County, the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office strives to fulfill their constitutional duties and public safety mission while improving the quality of life for those living, working, and visiting Wycomico County. And whereas, the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office has formed an alliance with community organizations and government leaders in an essential effort to fighting crime in our community. And whereas, the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office is committed to providing superior service and remains focused on their core purpose to preserve peace, seek justice, and improve the quality of life for all. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council honors the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office during National Police Week and thanks them for their service and dedication to our community, done this 15th day of May, 2018, by the Wycomico County Council.
You want to say something?
First of all, I want to thank the men of the Wycomico County Council for this proclamation. Truly means a lot to not only myself, Sergeant Burley Williams, Deputy Bill Parker, Captain Todd Richardson, but we accept this on behalf of all the men and women who work hard every single day to protect those citizens here in Wycomico County, and for those law enforcement officers from other agencies working here in Wycomico County who go out there every day to protect those we serve. So, thank you all very much. Very honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Absolutely. On the paper that these proclamations are put on, they all look the same, so I kinda got out of line there. And the reason I said there was a method to my madness is next week is actually National EMS Week, and we won't be here. We won't meet again until the first week in June, so I wanted to do you guys second. So, this proclamation for 2018 National EMS Week, Wycomico County Department of Emergency Service, whereas in 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized EMS Week to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work that they do in our nation's communities. And whereas, National EMS Week brings together local communities and medical personnel to honor the dedication of those who provide day-to-day lifesaving services. And the Wycomico County Department of Emergency Service is committed to providing the highest quality customer service to the residents and first responders of Wycomico County. Whereas, the Wycomico County Department of Emergency Services coordinates a comprehensive, all-hazard emergency operational plan and provides professional 911 responses to calls from citizens of Wycomico County. And whereas, the Wycomico County Department of Emergency Services provides effective communication between its three divisions for the coordination of first responders dispatched to calls for service. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council honors the Wycomico County Department of Emergency Services during National EMS Week and thanks them for their service and dedication to our community, done this 15th day of May, 2018, by the Wycomico County Council. Would you like to say something?
Yes, I want to thank you on behalf of the two components that actually make up the emergency medical services component. We have our 911 dispatchers and call takers, and then Ms. Perry here is representing the first, the field responders. So, there are two groups that are essential, critical components to that. So, I want to acknowledge and thank you on behalf of all the members of both the organizations.
Thank you, Dave. Good morning, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Council President, Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin with the agenda items, we do have a short presentation by Mr. Gene Faeher and Kenley Thames with the EES Streets Memorial VFW Post 5118. If you gentlemen want to come forward.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Mr. President, members of council, thank you for allowing us time to talk about a big event that's coming to Easton, Maryland. We are bringing the Vietnam Traveling Memorial Wall. This is a replica of the actual Vietnam wall that is in DC. It is about 300 feet. It has 58,318 names on it. This is all the military members that died in Vietnam. We are gonna read out loud every name on the wall. I'm very fortunate that I, and the Chairman of this event, and also the Commander at the post, we started this, or we looked into this program almost two years ago, and it took us about a year and a half to get the contract. I was really nervous what was gonna happen, how the public was gonna respond. Unbelievable. At our meetings, we formed some committees. In the last several meetings we've had, we've had over 100 people from our communities that come out to support this. We were wondering how in the devil were we ever gonna read 58,318 names out loud? Where were we gonna get the people to do this? We now have a waiting list close to 50 people who want to read that we can't work them in unless somebody doesn't show up. We are gonna read the names 15-minute intervals. We're gonna read them slow with respect. The wall is shaped like a V. 60 feet in front of this is solemn. It's, we're not allowing vendors to come in on this project. There's not gonna be whistles and carnivals. It's very solemn. People, family members can walk up to the wall. They will actually come to a tent. We've got so many youth involved. Our junior, JROTC, will be in the tent along with Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. Say I have a member that I know is on the wall, or a family or a friend, I will go to this tent, tell them the name. They will look up on their computer. They will personally walk us over, point to the name, turn around, do a bout face, and walk away. That gives you, as you're the person, the visitor, the opportunity to sit there and do whatever you feel. We have grief counselors, 24 hours a day that's gonna be on the scene, because we know it's gonna bring back memories for a lot of family members. We have volunteers from police agencies. The EMT, it was funny you just said that, we have their EMTs, the volunteers, they're gonna be there, have units there almost throughout the day. We have to supply guards 24 hours a day, two guards, not much to it, other than walk around protecting it. We have so many things that we were wondering, how are we gonna get the support? Like I said, they're coming from everywhere. Inside of our VFW post, which will be open 24 hours a day, we have displays. We're actually gonna be interviewing, not us, but Gene will explain a little bit further. There will be several Vietnam veterans who will be interviewed. I'll let him go in detail for that. Instead of keep talking, he's gonna talk about, because what we're gonna do, we have different days that are set out, that we are gonna honor Vietnam veterans from certain counties, and I'm gonna let Gene talk about, in detail about Wycomico County.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having us here. My name is Gene Faeher. I'm a Senior Vice Commander at the post, and I'm also a co-chair of this event. There are 77 men on the wall from the eastern shore of Maryland, and we are honoring all 77. There are 23 from Wycomico. It's the largest number on the wall. And on the, each day, there will be a wreath lane ceremony starting Friday, which will be Talbot County, on our opening ceremonies of June the 1st. Our guest speaker is flying up from Atlanta. He's retired four-star General Larry Ellis, who is from Dorchester originally, and he's been honored to fly up here and speak for us. On Monday, June the 4th, at 1 o'clock, Wycomico County Wreath Lane will occur. Of the 23 men on the wall, our committee has located 17 of those 23 families, and they have been extended an invitation to attend, and many of them will. The six that haven't, I'd like to leave a list here, and by name, and if we can get anyone here that knows any of these families. We have spent 10 months tracking families, and they have found 66 of the 77, which is a remarkable number, with 50 years of passage of time. But there are six, and outside of one from Hebron, everybody else here is, the other five are from Salisbury. So, if we can get your help in that. If we cannot find them, we invite any member of this council, if they would like to adopt those vets and appear at the wreath lane, we extend that invitation to you from Monday, June the 4th. This event will go from May 31st, when the wall arrives. It will be motorcycle escort from the western shore through Route 50 into Easton. All the agencies, including the Bridge MTA, will allow passage of, if the weather's good, between 6 and 1,000 motorcycle escort of the wall into town. And we'll assemble the wall Thursday. The wall will open Thursday evening at around 6:00 PM, and activities will start Friday. As I mentioned, opening ceremonies. Wednesday, on the 6th of June, will be our closing ceremonies. We have a number of guest speakers. One of them, which came in the last minute, will probably be Everett Alvarez, and if you don't know who that is, that's the longest-serving POW, eight and a half years in the Hanoi Hilton. And he is hoping to make it for our closing ceremony. So, we extend an invitation to everyone present and the general public. There's a couple of billboards, and I think there's one or two in Salisbury that just went up this week. I'm not sure where they are, because we had 10 of them go up, and we've lost count of where everything is. So, if there's any questions anybody has, please contact Kenley or myself. We'll be happy to answer them, and I really appreciate the time you've allotted for us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you being here, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll leave the names with your clerk of the court.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and looking at the agenda, the first item is a public hearing on Resolution Number 48, 2018, to authorize the county executive to execute on behalf of Wycomico County, Maryland, an application to the Maryland Department of Commerce for the designation of a regional institutional strategic enterprise zone, also referred to as a RISE Zone. We have Laura Soper, Director of Business Development with the city of Salisbury, and Allison Poulter, Deputy City Administrator here to answer any questions, and we also have Mr. Dave Ryan as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. This time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 48, 2018. If you have any comments that you would like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 48, 2018. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 48, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And we have had a work session on this already. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 49, 2018, amending the water and sewer plan to extend the water and sewer mainly, mean water, I'm sorry, water and sewer mains located in Dickerson Lane to serve Tax Map 20, Parcel 184, and we have Mr. Dallas Baker here, Director of Public Works.
This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 49, 2018. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 49, 2018. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 49, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 49, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing on the constant yield rate. The constant yield rate is a hypothetical real property tax rate calculated by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation. This rate would generate the same amount of revenue in fiscal year 19 that was generated in fiscal year 18. As the county's assessable real property tax base increases, the constant yield rate will decrease. By Maryland law, if the real property tax rate is set at the current level but above the constant yield rate, a public hearing must be held. In our situation, the county executive submitted a budget for fiscal year 19 with the same tax rate as fiscal year 18, but it is higher than the hypothetical constant yield tax rate, so we are required to hold a hearing. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this morning at 10:00 AM. There will be a resolution for consideration at the June 5 meeting for the proposed tax rate adoption, and that meeting will start at 6:00 PM in council chambers, Room 301.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on the constant yield rate. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none. That concludes the public hearing on the constant yield rate. Mrs. Hurley?
The next item is Resolution Number 51, 2018, and actually, 52, 2018 is also related. This is to appoint the Board of Managers for various public drainage associations within Wycomico County, and then 52, 2018 is to certify the drainage tax role to the Director of Finance as requested by the Board of Managers for the public drainage associations. The Board of Managers each year does a survey of the districts to determine what maintenance work is required. They then establish a levy by stating an amount per acreage of each property owner that benefits, and submits that information to council for approval by the Director of Finance. The Finance Department actually does the billing, but it's the manager's responsibility to undertake the survey. There was a concern that when property was being transferred, the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation was not notifying the Finance Department, so a number of property owners within a district were not receiving the tax bills. The Wycomico County Soil Conservation District hired a gentleman to review the matter last September, and he's been doing the mapping, reviewing the viewer's reports, and having public meetings. He mentioned that the next public meeting would be held for the Givens Public Drainage Association at 7:00 PM at the Powellville United Methodist Church on May 31, and then following that, the Allen Public Drainage Association meeting will be held at 7:00 PM on June the 1st at the Allen Community Hall. For the record, I will read off each of the Board of Managers for each district as shown in Resolution Number 51, 2018, starting with the Allen Public Drainage Association. And then Mr. Wayne Strasburg is here if there are any questions.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 51, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Are you doing both of them or individuals?
One at a time.
Okay, so, starting with Allen, we have Ellen G. Gray, George A. Whitney, David Quick. Adalot, we have Sid Richardson, Bruce Lewis, Richard Layfield. Beaver Dam, Arden Hickman, Quentin Riley, and George Bradford. Dividing Creek, Jimmy Johnson, Eric Culver, Tommy Johnson, Roger Richardson. Givens, Ben Brittingham, Gary Brittingham, Bruce Kelly. Green Branch, it's Herman Davis, Alan Richardson, Edwin Hudson. Head of Creek, Dale Massey, Elsie M. Wallace, and then a vacant position. Horsebridge, Larry First, Raymond Atkins, Orrin Purdue, and Jim Michalaskovich. Laws, we have Victor Laws III, Joe Durak, Ben Brittingham. Mill Branch, John Edwards, David Kenny, Donna Enzley. Nanico, it's Ron Maher, Mildred Wilson, and then a vacant slot. Nebo, Clifton Lawrence, Goldsboro Lawrence, Tyrone L. Price. Passerdyke, Charles Fleming III, Bob Gannon, Gene Donalds. Pine Branch, George C. White, Linda Truitt, Dave Williams. Texas Road, Bernard Nutter, Arsomus Nutter, Madeline Wickfall.
Okay. Any discussion from council?
Yeah, I have some questions. I guess from Dawn and maybe Wayne on this.
Yeah, come forward if you would like. Thank you.
This is the appointment of the managers. This is the appointment of the managers and that's resolutions for the rates.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay, good. I was noticing, Dawn Law said that they submit plans each year for repairs so the money can be doled out. Is that correct?
They submit to us invoices from the people who actually do the work. We receive invoices from them.
So, you don't approve the plan ahead of time?
We don't approve the plan ahead of time.
So, they're pretty much in charge of managing. Does that happen pretty much on a regular basis for every ditch every year?
I can't say every ditch every year, but most of them do, it looks like most of them do get worked on on an annual basis. Some of them are so big that they split them into, it looks like they split them, half of it one year, half of it the other, unless they have time.
Okay. I know I've heard some concerns, you know, since we've had all this flooding issues, you know, that really enlightened people to what these ditches were for. Has there been any talk of expanding any of the tax ditches from any of the managers of these that you know of?
We've not heard that, Joe. I think when Dallas updates you all this afternoon on stormwater management, he has some ideas with regard to potentially expanding some tax ditch areas where we don't have current infrastructure. But with regard to the current tax ditches, I've not heard of them.
I see we have a couple vacancies. How do you go about filling those when you have them? Do you do an outreach to people, or somebody already on the?
Actually, the managers try to find people who are willing to do the work.
It's not a very high-paying job, is it?
It's not a high-paying job. A lot of work, not much.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Holloway made a comment on something. I want to point something out. You said every ditch, but not every ditch in Wycomico County is a tax ditch, right?
Not every ditch in Wycomico County is a tax ditch, yes.
Thank you.
Are these individuals bonded? Are they, do they expose themselves to any liability? Just curious.
John, that would be a question probably from Mr. Wilder. I'm not aware of them being bonded. We've never required that.
Okay. Is there a limitation on the spending as far as what, do they have the power to authorize only to a certain level as far as what the expenses might be in a project?
Well, they can only spend as much as they have.
Understood. I just didn't know.
So, that would be the built-in limit, if you will.
I just didn't know who would make the decision that it would cost $1,000 to fix this particular area, whether it could be done for 500. I wasn't sure exactly what that process might be, approved.
What we really are is a conduit for the funds. We receive the funds, hold the funds, and then disperse funds if we have bona fide invoices.
When they send you the invoices.
Exactly.
Right.
Is the, oh, go ahead.
When you have a, we've got a situation down near Walston Switch that there's some complaints about the tile not being big enough to go under Walston Switch Road, and it's gonna have to be addressed at some point in time, and it's on this tax ditch. It's Beaver Dam Tax Ditch. Who would be responsible for that? Would that be a county roads project, or would that be something that the Tax Ditch Association would pick up?
Is the tile going under a county road, Joe?
Under a county road, yeah.
I'm gonna defer to Dallas, but I would suspect that that would be our problem.
If that's a problem.
Right. If it's passing under a county road, I think we would want to maintain that tile and be sure that it was properly sized.
Okay.
Yes, you mentioned being a conduit for these tax ditch associations, and you also mentioned there may not be enough money to fulfill a project that was requested. How is, how are these taxes collected?
We fill them on the tax bill on an annual basis.
So, they do have to pay it? So, if they don't pay their taxes, they're not paying their tax?
They're tax ditched, and they're eligible to go to tax sale for that.
Okay. Because I was gonna, my next question was about the enforcement, so that answered it.
Yes. One of the things we're doing right now, Laura referred to it earlier, is that the land transfers over a period of time weren't kept up to date. And recall that last year in the budget, we had put money in to hire someone to really do that research and to get the parcels back on the tax rolls. We've put money in this year's budget for the same purpose, to continue that, so that we get updated rolls. When we have the rolls updated, then we have to have a mechanism to be sure that we don't miss any further land transfers.
I've got some constituents in my district that have been complaining that their tax ditches in their community haven't been worked on. Can find out, they weren't tax ditches. So, who maintains those?
If they're on private property.
The owner.
We would have, yeah, we would have to look at that on a case-by-case basis, because, you know, if there's a homeowners association, perhaps it's their responsibility to take care of it. If it's just a single home, it may be the landowner's responsibility.
It's just a community.
So, we'd have to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Joe?
Sorry. We've hired somebody to bring this up to date, the folks that weren't being put on the tax rolls.
Correct.
So, at some point in time, these individuals probably gonna get caught up, we would hope.
Yes, yes.
So, will that be then turned over to the Finance Department to keep track of that? It should not have to be a full-time position, because not that many of them come on.
I think what we need to do, Joe, is just have something arranged with the clerk of the court, so that we're made aware when there's a transfer of a parcel that's in one of these PDAs, and we will work through that. I don't, did we not already work out something with Mark Bowen on that?
I would have to check.
I'll go back and check that for you, because, yeah, we don't want this
Slip through again.
To occur again. But there's gotta be that connection. SDAC used to do it for us. They don't do it for us anymore.
The transfers, the transfers do show up, because we already have the parcel. The parcel is already assigned to the ditch. It's when they take these properties and they split them up.
Subdivide them.
Subdivide them. That those are the properties that over the years have been missed, and that's what we're trying. Mr. Richardson brought that to our attention several years ago, and they tried, they tried to do it themselves, but it became too much of a project that they could do themselves. And that's where they can only took over and hired somebody.
So, you received any grief from anybody when that's suddenly an extra tax?
We haven't received, we, at this time, I'll check with Gail, but I don't believe we've even received a ditch to implement the changes as of yet. We haven't received, we, at this time, I'll check with Gail, but I don't believe we've even received a ditch to implement the changes as of yet.
Oh, so you've never, you've never added anybody?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, I'll have to check with her if last year she was given information. I don't know about if she was, but.
I don't understand that.
I don't recall that this year we've been given anything, well, the person was hired in September, did you say?
Yeah, but we met with him, we met with him, Joe, and he provided us with where he was in the process. Uh, we could come back and, you know, and update council on that at some point in time.
Yeah.
As to where we are in that process.
I'm surprised that nothing's been added yet.
No, there.
I can't say that nothing's, I need to verify with the person who does it.
Yeah, all right.
But we could have a session on that tonight.
We should do that.
Okay. Add it to the list.
Yes, any, any other questions? All those in favor of resolution fifty-one, two thousand and eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number fifty-two, two thousand and eighteen, this is to cert.
I think that's what I was thinking.
This is to certify the drainage tax roll to the Director of Finance as requested by the Board of Managers for the public drainage associations. Again, for the record, I'll read off each tax levy that is shown in the resolution, starting with the Alage Public Drainage Association. We have crop, three dollars, wood, seventy-five cents, minimum is fifteen dollars. Atalot, three dollars for crop, dollar fifty for wood, twenty-dollar minimum. Beaver Dam, two dollars and twenty-five cent for crop, seventy-five cents for wood, twenty-dollar minimum. Dividing Creek, seven dollars for crop, three dollars and fifty cents for wood, thirty-dollar minimum. Givens, seventy-five cents for crop, seventy-five cents for wood, fifteen-dollar minimum. Green Branch is two dollars and seventy cents for crop, ninety cents for wood, twenty-dollar minimum. Head of Creek, zero for crop, zero for wood, minimum is thirty-five dollars. Horse Bridge is forty cents for crop, ten cents for wood, and eight-dollar minimum. Laws is seventy-five cents for crop, seventy-five cents for wood, fifteen-dollar minimum. Mill Branch is two dollar for crop, fifty cents for wood, ten-dollar minimum. Nanicoke is seven dollars for crop, three dollars and fifty cents for wood, twenty-dollar minimum. Nebo, six dollars for crop, zero for wood, thirty-dollar minimum. Passerdyke, four dollars and fifty cents for crop, a dollar fifty for wood, twenty-dollar minimum. Pine Branch is three dollars for crop, a dollar for wood, fifteen-dollar minimum. Texas Road, zero for crop, zero for wood, and thirty-dollar minimum.
Thank you, Ms. Early, questions from council? Wayne, I, I, is the head of Creek in Texas Road, um, are those flat rates, since there's no charge for the individual?
Yeah.
So, they just have that one fee for the year?
They have that one flat rate.
Okay. Any questions, Joe?
I'm fine, thank you.
Larry?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, do you have a motion for that resolution?
May- maybe not, entertain a motion to approve resolution fifty-two, two thousand and eighteen.
Same here.
Second.
Same.
Thank you, Ms. Early. Uh, are, are these rates, um, the same as they were, as they've always been, or is this an increase, do we know, or?
There's very little movement in the rates, Joe.
Okay, okay. All those in favor of resolution fifty-two, two thousand and eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Wayne.
Sure.
Okay, the next item for business is resolution number fifty-three, two thousand and eighteen, authorizing the division and sale of sixty point oh-three acres of land, more or less, located along the northeasterly side of Sneeden Church Road, four fifty-two, south of San Domingo, identified as tax map six, grid twenty, parcel two thirty, known as one oh-eight five five Sneeden Church Road. Said parcel being subject to a deed of conservation easement, and we do have Mr. Jack Lennox, Director of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development here to answer any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution fifty-three, two thousand and eighteen.
Salute.
Second.
Same.
Second. Discussion from council. Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution fifty-three, two thousand and eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for business is resolution number fifty-four, two thousand and eighteen, authorizing Stanley Access Technologies LLC as a sole-source vendor for the purchase of seven Door Glide two thousand automatic bi-party sliding doors for the Salisbury Ocean City Wycomico Regional Airport Terminal Building. Stanley Access Technologies LLC is the sole-source manufacturer and distributor of the automatic sliding doors, and we have Dawn Beach Airport Manager, and we have Mr. Nick Rice, Purchasing Manager, here to answer any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution fifty-four, two thousand and eighteen.
Sumo.
Second.
Same.
Discussion, you wanna, come forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, you're busy.
Yes.
How's the weekend shaping up?
Uh, rain.
Don't, don't believe the weather, don't believe this weather, people.
I don't believe it until it happens.
And there's several other events going on that weekend as well.
If you could state your names and your positions for the public, thank you.
Nicholas Rice, purchasing agent, Wycomico County.
John Vage, Airport Manager, Salisbury Regional Airport.
Okay, if you could just give us another review of what you're asking, what, what the requirements?
Yes, so, um, the airport terminal building has sixteen of these sliding doors, nine of them have already been replaced with the exact door that we are requesting. That is a Stanley door, there's seven remaining, these, these are the remaining seven that will, um, replace the original doors that are over thirty years old. Stanley Access Technologies is the local distributor for these Stanley doors, and they're the only ones in our area that we can purchase these doors from.
Okay, any questions from council?
And it, it has to be these type of sliding doors, it can't be?
These match the exact same doors that are currently, that were replaced recently. So, the idea is to keep the doors standardized across.
When the doors were replaced recently, did they go through the same sort of sole-source process, I mean, did, did we approve that, or when was that approved?
I'd, I'd have to go back, this was, those were purchased prior to myself being here.
Okay.
Um, I, off the top of my head, I believe they were, I believe they were bid out, um, and Stanley Access Technologies was the only bidder, because they're the only ones that provide these doors.
Joe, um, service installation, who, um, do they, Stanley install them?
Correct, yep.
And who services them?
The same company.
They do, and where do they have to travel from?
Um, I believe they're in Jessup.
Jessup.
Located in Jessup, Maryland.
Yeah, those doors operating are pretty vital, you know, they don't need them broke down, so.
Well, and that, yeah, absolutely, that's why it's vital to get these remaining seven done, because like you said, they're over thirty years old.
Do we have to sign a service contract with them? Or just due to the fact that we bought?
No, it's, it's, it's an on-call, when, when we need service, we, we would just contact the rep, and they would send somebody out to repair it.
Is there any, um, training to our maintenance employees for minor repairs that, um, can be done?
I, from my understanding, the maintenance people that are over there now are trained on the current doors that have been replaced, um, which is another reason why this will help keep it standardized across. Yep, there'll be no new training required.
Okay, all right. Any questions, Larry?
Other than being thirty years old, were these doors damaged, or was this just a preventative, preventative, uh, measure?
Um, right now, we've got two that are damaged, um, just from wear and tear.
So, you wanna do all of them at the same time?
Um, we have a grant, some grant money that will expire too, if we don't move forward.
Sounds good to me.
I will tell, I will tell you, Larry, that, uh, we beat these doors to death for thirty years, and we couldn't get parts for them. And, uh, we searched all over the United States trying to get parts for them, so it, uh, became almost a hazard, because some of the doors wouldn't open, so, this was a, a knee-jerk reaction, originally two years ago when we got them repaired, and, uh, you know, until that time that we could get them fully established, this is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Councilman Hall.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution fifty-four, two thousand and eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, resolution passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, thank you, yes.
Okay, the next item for consideration is resolution number fifty-five, two thousand and eighteen, extending the day for the adoption of the Annual Budget and Appropriation Bill from June the first to June the fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Per Charter Section seven oh-five F, the Annual Budget and Appropriation Bill is to be adopted by June the first, unless the date is extended by resolution to a date no later than June the fifteenth. This year, June the first falls on a Friday, and the following Tuesday is, um, June the fifth, which is a regular, um, scheduled council meeting.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution fifty-five, two thousand and eighteen.
Sumo.
Second.
Same.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, resolution passes.
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Early. Good morning, Mr. Taylor, how are you?
Good morning, just one item this morning, um, that would be legislative bill two thousand and eighteen dash oh-six for introduction. Uh, it is by the Council President, it is an act to add chapter thirteen, titled County Internal Auditor, to the Wycomico County Code to clarify the powers and duties of the County Internal Auditor, and to include regulatory provisions related to the conduct of audits.
Entertained a motion to introduce legislative bill two thousand and eighteen oh-six.
Sumo.
Second.
Same.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any more?
Does she want me to just give a brief, if you would, thanks, synopsis of this? This, this is an outgrowth of the, uh, charter amendment review that we've been doing, and it, it actually substitutes for an item that was on the list of proposed charter amendments, for something that apparently, and, and, for certainly, can be done by code amendment rather than charter amendment.
Okay.
Um, and it, it's based on a ordinance from another county, Karen, Maryland.
Thank you, Ms. Joe, any questions from council members? All those in favor of introducing legislative bill two thousand and eighteen oh-six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, legislative bill two thousand and eighteen oh-six has been formally introduced. Ms. Early?
Yes, we can have the public hearing on June the fifth, if that's okay with council, at six P.M.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This time we open the floor for public comments, if you have any comments that you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county presidents, and, uh, your concerns. I'm not getting any more public comments. Council comments. That concludes the public comments, thank you. Uh, council comments. Councilman, Vice President Dodd?
Yeah, I just want to point out that, um, earlier, we, we, um, issued proclamations for National EMS Week and National Police Week, and it's just not one week that we honor these folks, we, um, honor them every single day, um, and it, it's great to serve with them, I think they're some of the best people in the nation, so, I want to thank both police, fire, and EMS for their service to our community. Also, um, I want to thank the NAACP for hosting a candidates forum, um, it was a great event, um, great turnout, a lot of good questions, so, thank you for that event. Then, uh, this past week, uh, Council President, um, Ken and I attended the war with graduation, and I think I've attended many of those, um, sitting on stage, watching these graduates go by, and, um, it's a good feeling seeing these people take a, a step in the journey of their life, so, congratulations to everybody that's graduated, and, um, congratulations to all the, uh, high school graduates that are upcoming June first or second, I think it is.
Councilman Hall?
Uh, this weekend, uh, Saturday, at the Salisbury Airport, uh, they have the Wings and Wheels, and they will have music, food trucks, airplane rides, bouncy councils, military aircraft displays, flybys, and lots more. The event will be from ten to three P.M., and, uh, they expect about four thousand people, uh, hopefully, it won't rain.
Four thousand planes, was it?
Yeah, right.
Any other council comments? And presidential comments, I'd just like to say, don't pay attention, any attention to the weather reports, because we feel that Saturday's gonna be a great day, and they don't always get it right until Saturday morning.
That's right.
So, make your plans now, and, uh, because it is a great event, it's a lot of fun, especially for the kids. That being said, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sumo.
From legislative session, Larry, I have four pages to read first. Entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by a closed work session pursuant to local government article section three dash three oh-five B one and eight, as follows, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position, and two, to discuss a personnel matter to protect the confidentiality of the individual. Larry?
I will offer that.
Are you gonna say? Say it.
Same.
Same, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. First item on the open work session, Mr. Dallas Baker, how are you this morning?
Doing well, sir, how are you?
Doing great.
I wonder if we could legally put all this, uh, stuff up on the screen, then all I have to do is make a motion to adjourn. You know how they always put it up there?
I thought about that, you need a smart board.
Yeah, put the small print up on the screen.
Real fast.
You'd like somebody else to read it for you? You can pad it around each week. I could do it each week. Hi, good morning, uh, Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works, Wycomico County.
Good morning, Dallas.
So, let's get into it, um, since our last update, we've held, uh, the public drainage meetings, I think everybody here is aware of, we had four of them throughout the county, uh, over the, over the course of March. We received thirty-nine written comments, uh, we have touched everyone that left contact information, we have called, uh, at, at least twice, some folks haven't returned our calls, but, um, we, we've gotten in touch with the, the majority of folks. We asked folks for written comments, we also asked them, it's a little hard to see on this sheet, um, but we asked them to identify locations in the county where they are experiencing drainage problems, to, to get an idea of if we are going to do regional studies, where would be the best locations to look at, uh, looking to see where the locations have been clustered, um, particularly, you can see down in the, uh, the bi-valve area, there are, uh, a lot of drainage concerns, um, again, also out on the, uh, the west side, I'm sorry, the east side of the county, and then some here centrally located in the Salisbury region. So, in our calls to the citizens, one of the first questions we asked was where they located that, to try to get a sense of what the drainage issues were, in, in terms of, was it a state road, is it a county road? What we found is the majority of the concerns were located on private drainage areas, um, some of the things that, uh, Councilman Dodd was speaking about earlier. The folks that were experiencing issues with the state right-of-way, or, or county right-of-way, or, I'm sorry, city right-of-way, were directed to the, the appropriate agencies within those governments. We also asked citizens what they felt the cause of the, the flooding was, uh, and we broke that down, and the majority of, uh, of citizens felt it was, uh, their ditches needed cleaning. Some folks saw some issues from, uh, uh, development, sheeting flow onto their property, um, some experienced, uh, tidal flooding, again, that was more likely down in the, uh, the bi-valve area, and then, um, there were folks that just saw the branches overflowing when we got heavy rains. But, but again, the, the majority of folks felt that the, uh, that their ditches needed cleaning out was what was causing the, the flooding issues. So, what this helps us do is moving forward, how do we get the most bang for the buck, but that's gonna be to address private drainage issues on ditches that need cleaning out, um, and, and looking for ways to help citizens get these issues addressed. Which leads me into the urban service districts for drainage. Currently, the county has urban service districts for street lighting, for water mains, things of that nature, and basically what happens is a community will tell us via petition, we want streetlights, I'm gonna use the example of streetlights first, um, we want streetlights, so everyone says, okay, county, give us a price for how much it's gonna cost us to get streetlights, we get them a cost, go back to them, everybody agrees, the lighting company comes in, installs the lights, and then the cost for those lights are passed on via their tax bills. The hiccup in that process right now with drainage, if a community came to us and said, we want our private drainage cleaned out, made public, either because the HOA went defunct, or for whatever reason, the, the hiccup is how does the county fund those private ditch cleanups? So, let, let's just take, for example, um, there are two, uh, two example subdivisions that I thought off the, the top of my head, based off of the, some of the calls we've received, that could be potential candidates, um, we have Kilburne, and then also the Hollywood subdivision. We have Kilburne and then also the Hollywood subdivision. Hollywood is off of Snow Hill Road, so.
Where is Snow Hill Road?
If you're heading east, it's just past Nutter's Cross. It's Cardinal and Meadowlark. It's a smaller subdivision built back in the, I believe, the late seventies was when construction started.
Where Cardinal Lane is?
Yes, yes.
On the left-hand side.
Late, yeah, okay.
It's a circle, right?
Yep, yeah. So in those cases, if we were to go in and clean their ditches out, say we hired a contractor to go in, because a lot of the issues stemming from these private drainage concerns with these ditches, there's not enough room for Public Works to get our equipment in there. Most of our equipment is very large scale for operating on roads. We don't have really small-scale equipment to get in and clean out. We also don't really have the manpower to be cleaning out all these smaller ditches. So the thought was to hire a contractor that would go in, clean these ditches out, and then have that cost passed on to the homeowners. And the question would be, how is that funded then? Because the contractor's going to want his money upfront. So there's some discussions that we've been having with the Department of Finance regarding, is it something we forward fund? Do we put money in the budget that gets kind of a revolving fund? Or do we go out and obtain a private loan? Could we go out to M&amp;T Bank, say, get a loan from them that is then paid back by the tax payments at the end of the year? So that is what we're working through right now to figure, okay, how do we finance this type of situation? And then, once we have that process in place, we will be presenting this to the homeowners. And again, it's something that everyone would have to be on board with, following the same procedures that we do for street lighting, which I believe is fifty percent of the community has to be willing to support the cost of getting their ditches cleaned out. So that is what we're looking for right now, looking or moving forward with right now to try to address some of these private drainage issues. It does, again, I think it gets us the most bang for our buck.
And then would the county go in there and determine what their needs were? Or would you rely on the homeowners' association to say, well, we need this? I mean, because, you know, you guys have a little more expertise, I would imagine.
Yeah, the thought would be is to supply a potentially bid-out contractor to come in and take a look at the drainage system. We would provide them with the drawings that we have on file showing what the drainage system is supposed to look like, and then having the contractor come in and say, okay, here's what it's supposed to look like. Examine the site. See what it looks like now. Give us an estimate for getting these grades cleaned out, getting the soils cleaned out, clearing out any excess vegetation.
There's no doubt that there's some issues, you know, and we've had drainage issues. I'm looking at this thinking maybe you're putting cart before the horse here. If the county's not doing their job on keeping the ditches clean, first, how can we approach these areas? Now, it's my understanding that we don't even have a ditch crew anymore in county roads. Is that correct?
We have two inmate crews, and at best, we get four inmates for each crew. I'll say, so we, since the days when we used to have the ditching crew, and we had about twelve inmates, we've just seen the numbers dwindle down. I know we just had the new warden come on board at Corrections, but I was going to reach out to her to have a discussion about what are the issues with the amount of inmates that we're getting? Do we need to reach out to ECI to try to get additional inmates? But yes, that is something that we are, we're aware of, and we are looking at.
You know, I know myself, and I think other council people, have heard complaints from a lot of folks, even along the county roads, that things haven't been taken care of, that basically don't need ditch crew. I mean, inmates for it, stuff that county employees could take care of with equipment. So don't we need to address those issues before we start talking about urban service districts? Make sure the county's doing their part, because you clean out, not necessarily Kilburne or Hollywood. There might be other neighborhoods, you know, you create an urban service district for keeping the ditches clean. They got theirs cleaned, but when it gets to the county's portion, or the state for that matter, because we've got that issue on Mount Herman Road where it's not draining, it's not necessarily just the county. So it doesn't really do any good, you know?
The short answer to your question is yes. Both issues can be addressed. It doesn't have to be one or the other, and we are out actively cleaning ditches. And a couple slides, I'll show you some of the work that we, on the county end, have been doing. But again, this goes back to what we've been finding from the citizens, their private ditches. So in cases like the example with Kilburne, the ditches are private. The county, it's not that the county hasn't cleaned them. It's never been the county's responsibility to clean behind citizens' houses. And that's where we're seeing the largest percentage of the problem. So while there was a few that said, hey, look, yeah, we need some clean out on county roads, and we certainly went out and are out addressing those now, the over half of the folks said that the problems were private ditches not being cleaned. And that's what we're looking to do. I'm not saying, let's do this and then go clean out our own ditches. I'm saying, while we're cleaning out our ditches, let's help these folks get the tools they need. Because there's a lot of citizens that are, that will say, look, we really want to get it cleaned out, but no one's putting in money into their HOA. I talked to one guy, you know, it was forty bucks a year for his homeowners' association, and he said he's lucky if he gets a third of the folks in his community to even put that up. I had a lady out in Hollywood that she was actively herself soliciting contractor quotes and then sending letters out to her neighbors, hey, look, this is how much it's going to cost. Can we all just get together, and if we all pitch in a little bit of money, we can get these drainage issues resolved? And what we were finding is the folks that were immediately next to the ditch had a vested interest in it. Yeah, sure, but if you were four or five houses up and your house wasn't getting flooded, they didn't care. There was no, they had no buy into it. And so again, that's where the thought of the urban service district extending to those cases for the folks that aren't experiencing problem with a county ditch, but they're experiencing problems with what's behind their house, and trying to find solutions for them.
But aren't we in public works or county roads? Aren't we down staffing? So from what we were before pre-recession times to now, aren't we down greatly? So Wayne, Mr. Strausberg's shaking his head. People see me looking back there. So he's saying yes. County administrator's saying, yes, we're down in staffing. So I understand what you guys are doing here. I'm, you know, I'm fine with what your approach is, but we've got to get our end of the problem taken care of, addressed before we start moving into... I mean, people get real touchy when you're talking about charging them more money. You see what I'm saying?
I understand.
Why should my county taxes take care of that?
And their county taxes are taking care of county roads, but their county taxes aren't taking care of the private.
County ditches too, also.
Yeah, county ditches, yes.
But they're not, because we don't have the staffing to take care of them like they should be.
We would certainly be able to take care of more if we had more staff, but that will not address the private ditches. If you give me double the staff, I'm still not going to be able to help Kilburne.
We understand that, but if you get Kilburne draining, and it has nowhere to go to, of course, they have a tax ditch.
Yeah, they drain the Horse Bridge.
But if you get one of these neighborhoods that you put in an urban service district, and the water gets to the county or the state, for that matter, and it has nowhere to go, it's not really going to do much good.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes, we talked about one of these developments that you had on the board there at the last work session. And one of the biggest complaints was the residents are saying that it's not fair for me to pay my homeowners' association fees, and nobody else is paying there. So they're carrying the load for them, and there's got to be some way to enforce it, or there's no need to have a homeowners' association.
Well, not, give you an example. Nottingham Woods, it's my understanding, they have about a hundred percent participation
That's correct.
in their homeowners' association, and if they don't, they take action. So it's always up to the homeowners' association and whoever's leading it to see how active they are in trying to collect this money. And I find that really amazing, that you have that many homes in Nottingham Woods, and they have a hundred percent participation. I think that's great.
That is great.
And it reflects on the way the neighborhood looks, too.
I do have another question. Councilman Holloway mentioned that area on Mount Herman Road, and I think it's the same area that I watched the flooding, and I contacted Wes, and he said that's a state, and I did see a state truck come out there. Has that been rectified?
I'm not familiar with the specific location you're referencing, but if you let me know, I can certainly follow up on it.
Atkins Market.
Atkins Market.
We tell people not to drive through flooded areas on roads, and if we're not correcting the problem, we're not blocking the road, I mean, setting ourselves up for a disaster.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
We don't know what's going to wash away or what's under there.
I'll check on that and let you know.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
If you're out there, let me know.
You always mention that you don't have the equipment to dig out ditches. You say your equipment is too big.
Yeah, for the smaller areas, like, again, behind Kilburne and between some of the smaller ditches in Lake Hollywood. Those are two low-hanging fruits that I like to point to. Yeah, our equipment, we have gradealls that are fifteen foot wide, you know, we've got excavators, things like that. But as far as trying to get in and do some type of handing, or... And we are looking at acquiring a mini excavator to try to fit into some of these smaller areas to try to help out. One of the challenges we face is that we have to also haul any material out that we clean for sediment erosion control. So if we're digging out with an excavator, you can imagine, if you're thirty or forty feet into a ditch with an excavator, you're taking a scoop, turning around, driving it back out to your dump truck, dumping it off, turning around, coming back. It's a slow process.
And I look at your plan, part of the problem on the west side is there's a long stretch on Delaware Avenue that no one lives on. So how would you kind of address that? I mean, you can't go out and attack the valley because no one lived there, but it's a major portion that's causing most of the problem.
You're talking about Cody Cox?
Yeah, down there on Delaware Avenue, just before it gets into the city, Rose Street.
Yeah, and I've actually got some, a talking slide on Cody Cox here in a couple minutes. Okay?
Dallas, how do you, how do we separate, what's the distinction between the properties that are on the tax ditch rolls and this urban service plan that you have here?
In some cases, there's overlap. So in the example of Kilburne, they drain to, they drain to the Horse Bridge tax ditch. So I believe they are assessed a portion of that. But it's the homeowners', or the homeowners' association's responsibility to get the water from their private network into Horse Bridge. We've received several calls from that subdivision.
Obviously, it was around when the tax ditch rolls were established. Would you say that's similar, this whole conglomerate tax ditch properties to what you're proposing here, but on a broader scale?
I'd say it's a little bit smaller and more localized scale. It's a similar concept, whereas instead of having several farmers getting together and clearing out the ditches, typically, from what we've seen, most farmers have the larger equipment, similar to what Public Works has. Looking more towards some of these smaller landscaping companies that have, again, smaller equipment that can get into these areas behind fences and between fences and sheds to get them cleaned out.
Dallas, isn't all of Kilburne taxed on the Horse Bridge tax ditch?
Yes, I believe all of Kilburne drains into the Horse Bridge tax ditch.
So basically, when you're talking about an urban service district, you're talking about an additional tax ditch, an additional cost. You can call it tax ditch, you can call it whatever you want. So not only are they on the Horse Bridge, right, Horse Bridge Tax Ditch Association, then you're talking, if you create an urban service district for that neighborhood, they've got another tax. So they're going to have two ditch taxes?
They potentially could. Their water, their drainage, doesn't get to Horse Bridge because they haven't taken care of their own internal network. You know, the folks that run Horse Bridge have been taking care of Horse Bridge. It drains not just them, but other folks. And if you go out there, you see a wide area that's able to take the flow. But if you go to Kilburne, you see lots of trees and debris, folks that have been dumping their leaves behind their houses. That is not the responsibility of Horse Bridge. And it's a responsibility, and you're right. If they all collected their homeowners' associations and paid for to get those ditches cleaned out, they would not be looking at this additional cost. You know, so certainly, we can certainly back off and say, all right, well, we're not going to do this. You already pay one. But it's on them, and what they're saying is where we need help, the folks that are supposed to pay, aren't. So it's not so much that they are now paying in addition to it. We're basically trying to give the homeowners' association a method to get these issues cleaned out, when they don't have teeth now.
What is the, I guess, have to read the bylaws of the tax ditch associations? Do they basically do just the tax ditch? They don't do any fingers off of it?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm not sure how that works either. I'll have to check.
Mr. Cannon, I'm just wondering, along this, what you've been discussing, could they possibly be expanded? Could the tax ditch association for that particular location be expanded to include those other areas? And/or could the tax ditch idea be used in other subdivisions where there's low participation in terms of dollars? Because you got the ability to impose the fee on the tax bill.
It solves the collection problem.
That's entirely possible. What we've found out, though, is most of the folks that maintain these tax ditches, again, they don't have the smaller equipment to get into these tight spots, so.
Now, don't them have equipment, the ones that maintain, I mean, most of them are contractors.
Can run it, yeah.
I was worried the purpose in my question initially is, what is the solution to this? Is it creating urban services districts as you're suggesting? Or is it expanding what we already have as far as the public drainage associations are concerned?
My recommendation is for the urban service district. That way, again, it's more localized to the folks that are impacted by it. Not everybody in the tax ditch needs to have their drainage cleaned out. Tax ditches serve very large communities. So I don't know how the managers of the tax ditches would say, well, we've encountered an additional thirty thousand dollars cost to go in and clean out this subdivision. How do they divide that? Do they even have the ability to divide that to a specific group? Because if you're here, and you need that cleaned out, but over here doesn't, is it fair to make these folks pay for something that these folks haven't been doing? I don't know if they have that ability or not. It's certainly something we can look into.
Also, Mr. President, some of these neighborhoods don't really drain to a tax ditch, so they would not be able to hook up to a PDA. I don't know about Hollywood. Do they hook up to a tax ditch?
I don't believe they do.
So there's no PDA available for them to piggyback off of, I guess is a good word.
And from what I understand, because I know Sentinel Village contacted me about this a couple of years ago, and, you know, because people weren't paying, and the drainage was an issue, and, you know, talked about, well, maybe we can form a tax ditch, and talked to, it was John Redden. When he was there, he said, look, a tax ditch process takes years to go through, and, you know, Texas Road went through it, and I think it took a couple of years for them. He said that that's, there wasn't a process to do it more quickly and, you know, more localized. So having an easier process for people that, if they want that option to be able to do, probably be easier than going through what is apparently a pretty long and complicated process to form a tax ditch association. If it could be something that a homeowners' association could request
Exactly.
and do locally and more quickly, that would probably be a lot easier. Just have it as an option, not forcing anybody to have it as an option.
Exactly, and that's one, and that raises a good point. The thing with the tax ditches, or, I'm sorry, the service districts is this is something that the community approaches us on. It isn't that the government says, we're going to fix this, and you're going to pay more money. It's the community says, they have to get a petition that has at least fifty percent of their community saying, here, we want this. Then we get a price for them. Then we come back and say, okay, here's how much it's cost. Do you still want it? There are multiple checks where the community can say, yes, please come help us. Or if they don't like the cost, they don't have to do it. So there is, it's not a mandate, it's not, it's not a tax, it's us trying to find ways to help them because they're asking us.
Having the most gray hair up here on the council, I can relate back to the middle seventies when the Horse Bridge Tax Ditch was formed. There was a lot of contention. Neighbors really mad at other neighbors. Forming a tax ditch is not a pleasant thing to go through. It would be, we'd probably have a roomful of people every meeting if we got started on that. So that'd be kind of a bad option to follow right now, to form a new tax ditches, even though it's a possibility there are some areas that might need them, so.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to what can they... So, so moving on to what can the county do about our own roads? I just wanna, uh, show you some examples of the work that we have been out doing. Um, out of, starting on the left side, uh, out at Williams Mill Pond Road, uh, they have a drainage issue, uh, with water on the roads and with some neighbors' properties flooding. So we are actually constructing a new swale to, to go out to, to the local branch. Um, on Douglas Road, uh, there was a low point in the road that was sending water into a residence, uh, basically into his garage, and then it would bypass and get behind several houses into a low point in the, kind of in the middle of the block. Uh, we've constructed a, a valley gutter and helped raise the entrance to, to his driveway to, to channel that water further down the road, along the natural path that, that takes it down to Riverside and, and eventually out to the river. So that way, his, his house is no longer flooding.
Is that similar to what was happening on South Kaywood?
Yeah, y- yeah, o- o- on a smaller scale, yes. When we, when, when, when Raj Sharma built the, uh, the gutter out there on, um, on, on South Kaywood, that was what his intention was.
Would we be taking corrective measures for that, you think?
For South Kaywood?
Yes.
South Kaywood was a different issue. It wasn't so much that there was water getting directed off the road. It was just that the whole system had flooded because of the eight inches of rain.
Right. It was a swale in the back too, wasn't it?
There was also a swale in the back that hadn't been cleaned out, where the neighbor had built a driveway over top of, um, over the swale, they had put in, i- i- it might have been a six inch pipe at most, um, through that swell. So there, there were multiple issues i- in, in, in South Kaywood. Um, a- out on Colburn Mill Road, um, the upper picture to, on, on, on the right-hand side, you can see the, the amount of water and ponding that, that entrance is experiencing. And then in the, the lower right, you can see where we are actually, again, building another ditch to, to, um, it's in the process of getting constructed. That's going to eventually tie into this intersection and take that water off and, and, and help to drain it. Um, and I, I don't have pictures for these, but we've, we've cleared, um, some pipe obstructions. Out on Levin de Sheil Road, that was causing flooding, where some beavers had dammed a, a pipe up. And then, uh, also there was, we had, uh, a lot of ponding water on Taylor Road, and that was corrected after the road was repaved and we regraded it. So again, we are, the, the county is taking care of its own house. We're, we're working on our to-do list of things to take care of our own house. Um, in, in regards to one of the, one of our hotspots that started this, the Pratt Road, uh, we have received the drainage study, uh, that's currently under review. Uh, it's, it was over a hundred pages involved with that study, so it's, it's taking a little bit for us to go through all of the calculations. Um, some of the improvements that are being suggested are a, a bypass of Pratt Road, taking it from the pond that serves Hunter's Mill, around Pratt Road, behind the properties, and then having that empty into the existing swale. Uh, we are also looking at potentially adding in a second crossing at Pemberton Drive from the Pratt, from the Pratt Road swale to, to what runs in the middle of Nistale. And then, um, shoring up the area behind the houses in Nistale, where they saw a lot of the, um, the erosion and, and channelization occur. So it, it is a systemic approach. There are other suggestions, but I've, these three kind of highlight some of the, some of the more dramatic improvements that they're talking about out there.
Can you give us a PDF of that?
Yeah.
I mean, that, uh, study.
I- if it's okay with you, I'd like to forward that after our comments have been addressed, because there's some things in there that we've read it and it's like, wait a minute, hold on, that, that doesn't make sense. So we want clarification. But yeah, the intention is to certainly present that report in its entirety. I'd just like to get, get those questions addressed first.
I wanna step back a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned a while ago with cleaning out a ditch and having to get the stuff in the dump truck. And we talk about people putting leaves in. On these private properties, and we'll use Kilburne for an example, if somebody went in there, say with a small excavator, to do the ditches and they, I know expanding ditches is different than cleaning the bottoms of the ditch out. I think you step into a different territory, am I correct? When you go digging a new ditch or expanding a ditch?
Yeah, there, there are more stringent regulations involved if you're building something new or...
Expanding or whatever. So I, I think down home, they call it dipping the bottom of the ditch out so it has more flow. Do you have to load that material and move it, or can you just have, can you just put it along the side of the ditch?
No, we have to take all of it out.
So if you were three hundred foot or a hundred yards back in the woods trying to, or a private contractor, for that matter, would have to remove the material?
Yes. Yes, and, and that presents a lot of the challenges.
That changes the whole picture of doing the work.
Yeah, the, 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 the work that was done back in the, you know, the, the sixties and seventies with these inmate crews, you know, they were all, they did not have their hands tied with some of these environmental regulations that we've got now. Whether it's taking everything out that we, that we dig out of, out of a swale, or whether it's, hey, don't work in that wetland, even though there's a tree that fell down and is blocking the ditch. Well, it's, it's a wetland, so you can't go in there and clear it. I mean, the, the regs are what they are, but, but sometimes those environmental regulations hinder, um, and, and those come from the state and federal level.
What, what you dug out, like you showed the pictures of swales, ditches or whatever, um, when you were moving the dirt, are you putting anything in there, riprap grass or anything to anchor, uh, the soil down so it doesn't erode away?
Um, typically, the, the velocities we th- see through there, um, aren't, aren't erosion unless we have the, the large storms. We do certainly riprap around the pipe entrances, um, but no, we, we don't typically go in. With, let me just fucking back up.
Because you know it's gonna fill back in.
Yeah, well... So, i- I mean, y- you can see, I mean, the side slopes, you're, you're not gonna get grass seed on the bottom of that. And when we throw grass in the bottom of, of some of these, it's got water. What we find is, y- y- you come back six months from now and vegetation's growing on it. The important thing is to not kill what's growing there, which is a lot of times what we'll see on private swales. Folks will spray the weed killer and then the soil starts sloughing in. You know, you, you let the soil, let the, let the vegetation grow, that thing's gonna fill up with weeds before the end of the summer. And when I say fill up with weeds, I mean weeds will take root, hold them, hold it in place. Um, but yeah, we do, we do riprap the edges around the pipes and things like that for protection. Okay?
Thank you.
So Pratt Road, um, and, and the next one we are looking at i- is Cody Cox. So there are seven pipe crossings between Billie Jean Jackson Park and West Road. And we're getting quotes right now to get surveys of all of those pipe crossings to make sure, number one, that the, the pipes are at the correct elevation. We wanna make sure that there's not a certain pipe that's higher than the other. We've also gone out there, Lee, Lee Atton and myself have gone out and, and walked through behind the houses. And, and, and there's, there's a significant amount of debris in that channel. So we are looking at ways to try to get that cleared out. What we found is that, um, in, in some cases, there's actually a paper alley that runs right along the edge of the banks that's wide enough that we could get our gradeall out there to start scooping stuff out and getting that area cleared up. We would have to go in probably with the boom axe and get some of it mowed out so that we can get the, the equipment back there. But that is, that is what we're looking at doing. Um, we would certainly communicate with the homeowners ahead of time. I mean, just because we have a paper street doesn't mean it's not gonna disturb them if they see a gradeall rumbling around in their backyard. So w- we'll reach out. Right now, we're doing the preliminary legwork to see, okay, what is it that we need to get done? Um, as you know, Cody Cox, we use enter out through the, the city and the county. Um, but we're certainly looking on our end and, um, we'll coordinate with the city to see if they wanna do something similar.
I think Councilman Davis is a hundred percent correct when he says that's a high priority.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Because that, that, that has been a problem forever.
Yeah, and, and, and one of the specific examples that, uh, the Councilman Davis brought up to me at the, at the March meeting, the March fifteenth meeting, was the, uh, the two pipes. If you look in the upper right-hand corner, you see two pipes over top of what used to be an old driveway, I'm assuming.
It was.
Um, that is, those are actually the overflow pipes. What, what's hard to see is, if you look in the, the lower right picture, there's a pipe under the water that passes that flow for Cody Cox. Now, I'm not saying it's undersized or that it's the correct size, because looking at this picture, it certainly does look like it's smaller. And I will, let me caveat all this by saying this is in the city. But looking at this arrangement, I'm not sure what the purpose of the driveway is. It seems to me it would make more sense to, to, to rip all that out and just let the flow go through naturally. Um, maybe they're using it for maintenance with Westbrook Commons, but if, I mean, if that whole section was pulled out and a larger pipe was put in place, you know, i- it's, it's mostly earthwork and, and pipe. It's not a whole lot of, it's not like you have to tear up asphalt to get in there and do that work. So i- it's something we'll certainly approach the city with and say, hey, look, you know, is this something that we could look at getting done? But again, bef- before we do that, if we get our survey work, we can say, okay, what elevation does that new pipe need to go in at? So again, we are, we are looking at that, that Cody Cox drainage area. That was very clear to us from the, one of the meetings, is that's one of the hotspots, so.
In all your conversations, I know you've been working on this for a long time, did it ever come up about a law against dumping to prevent people from filling in ditches with law, uh, leaves and dirt, you know?
I- i- it has, I mean, there, there's, uh, the challenge becomes when they're, they're dumping on private property. And we certainly can tell folks, hey, look, don't dump in our ditches. And, and we have put signs up about illegal dumping and about not dumping leaves in our, in our swales. But on the private ones, um, code enforcement, I think, has some, uh, authority to address if they're throwing garbage. But if somebody's dumping leave clippings in, um, i- it gets a little more, it gets a little more esoteric because you have to start relying on, well, are they impeding the drainage and the usage and things like that? Um, so, a- a- and that's where we're hoping to have the education side work out on. We're, again, we're, we're drafting up, now that I have a, I've got an engineer on staff now, um, we're working on developing that draft of, uh, basically a flyer about ditch maintenance to send out with tax bills to try to educate the public about, don't kill the grass in your ditch, don't dump your leaves in the back, please. You know, we take it at the landfill for free. You don't even need a, a, a permit and household sticker. Just, just bring it out to the brush pile, so.
Are there other counties that set up some type of punitive measures if that's, if, if people do those type of dumping?
There, there are some counties on the western shore, um, I believe PG and Frederick, uh, have some legislation about, um, basically ditch enforcement, so, you know, if you're impeding the drainage. Um, and, and that's some of the example legislation that we're trying to tailor, to, to give ourselves some teeth to, to prevent folks from dumping trash in the backs of the houses.
I mean, we don't wanna be heavy-handed as, as a government agency, but I mean, some people have to accept certain responsibilities that come with a property, especially if it begins to impede the, the privileges of their neighbors and compromise, you know, those, their pro- their neighbors' properties as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they, one of the major important parts about good drainage on this, people think, well, it's flooding my street and flooding my yard, but it's septic's that really this has a larger effect and a bigger cost at some point in time for a homeowner. Because septic's, it, they, they fail because of this, so.
Yep.
Especially when you take an area like Kilburne, I think they're probably pretty on the edge, some of the septic's in there.
Yeah, and same way with it, with Hollywood. And one of the, one of the comments from the, uh, the Hollywood, from, from those drainage meetings was that when, when we got the August storms, she lost the use of her septic system for two days because of the flooding she experienced in her backyard.
Good point.
So, so that, that was, uh, that was all I had. Was there any questions?
Well, I do have one.
Yes.
You know, we're in the budget season.
We are.
How about that? Without putting you on the spot, and I think this problem will unfortunately, would extra funding to the county roads for another crew, um, to help, would that help alleviate some of the issues we have?
W- w- we could certainly u- use additional people.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other? Mark?
Yeah, um, so in a couple of years, you know, you're talking about the work the county's doing. I know we've heard concerns about Levin de Sheil Road, the drainage on that, and Beaver Dam is, is good. Um, uh, you know, taking that out is good. And on Pemberton Drive, are you looking at putting in ditches in areas where there aren't ditches? Like, because in both those areas where there's flooding across the road, especially Levin de Sheil, um, you know, after heavy rain, it just, I think it flows off the field into the road. Um, so are you looking at building new ditches along some roads like that?
Yeah.
And Pemberton, I know you've heard about the problems at Pemberton.
Yes, so i- i- in, in the cases I showed for, for both Colburn Mill and also for, um, Williams Mill Pond, both of those were new ditches that were constructed. Um, so yes, we, we are looking at that.
So is, are Levin de Sheil and Pemberton on that list of roads to look at for...
Levin de Sheil, I, was, is, is not on the list, um, and, and neither is Pemberton. Um, the, we believe we've, it's, it's something we can certainly continue to look at. Um, the Levin de Sheil issue on, on our end was really just getting that Beaver Dam out of the way. Things seem to be draining better out there, but if we're still having problems, we, we can certainly look at it. Um, in regard to Pemberton, it's something we actively look at. I know we receive a lot of calls.
Yeah.
Um, the, um, and i- i- it's something we, we, we continue to keep an eye on. We, we're not, the, the soils out there are very good, and a lot of that water that comes off of Pemberton is going into the ground, um, except in the, you know, again, the, the, the three big storms we had over the last two years. That seems to be the case with, with, with Pemberton in that area.
All right, well, I would, I would certainly encourage that, you know, maybe taking a second look at both of those. I mean, especially, you know, with Levin de Sheil, it's more down towards Nanicoke Road, I mean, it's not a Beaver Dam area.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, again, it kind of runs off, it's just after a heavy, you know, not the super heavy rains, just any rain really, you know, there's a lot of pooling on the road and things like that, so, um... And again, I'm not sure what could be done, um, you know, I, I'm working with the farmers and whatnot down, down in that way. But, um, um, it, it, there's definitely, there's not a ditch, I mean, there's a little bit of a ditch coming off Nanicoke Road, but it just kinda stops, you know, after, you know, thirty, forty feet or something like that. So maybe trying to have more of a ditch, but...
We'll certainly look at it.
Access to the field might be an issue too, so I, you know, but, and then Pemberton, I know that, um, there's someone who's very concerned about that. And so anything that could be done to maybe look again at ways to, for ditching and things like that to alleviate those concerns would be very good.
Well done.
Here's, here's directions to, um, the area of Mount Herman Road that I was talking about, that may be a state area. I think there's two locations on Mount Herman Road, other than the Atkins.
Okay, thank you.
If you go out there, let me know, I'll go out there with you.
Absolutely.
Questions? I guess we will meet again in a couple of months. Is that great? Take time.
Uh, yes, yeah, um, well, uh, like I said, we'll, we'll, we'll go through the, um, go through Pratt Road, forward that on to you, and then we'll also, uh, again, keep making strides on Cody Cox, um, keep cleaning out ditches and things like that. And, um, we're gonna, an update and then continue working towards the answer of how do we fund some of these private ditch cleanups? And, uh, yeah, keep, keep making forward.
Were you looking for a consensus from the council on these, your recommendations or proposals on these urban service areas? Where, where do you, where do you expect to take that from here today?
It, it was mostly just to introduce the issue to you, to let you know what our thought process was and make sure that nobody wasn't saying no, but no. Um, uh...
So if you came back in...
We, we, we have to, we have to answer the question on our end, really before presenting it to you of how does this get funded? It really, so I, I just kinda wanted to introduce the issue, let you know what, what the question is that we're looking at, uh, and make sure that it wasn't a, I, I, I don't wanna go chasing something down the rabbit hole that wasn't gonna bear any fruit.
It seems like a feasible option to consider, I, I would think.
Like I said, the, 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 the benefit on our end that we thought was it's something that the citizens can request. And it, it's, you know, it does have to meet their consensus to, to move forward with it.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate the, the work you've done, because this started out, uh, we, we know that the issue initially was a couple of years ago. And this more recent period of time, as you, as, once you've come aboard, uh, what you've done with it, I think is absolutely phenomenal. Um, you've held the, you know, you've held the quarterly meet, or the meetings in the different quadrants of Wycomico County. Um, I think it was certainly more than just lip service. You did listen to what they said. I think you put together a great presentation here. Uh, you're making some very, uh, very sensible recommendations. And I very much so from, from, uh, four or five months ago, I, I'm very pleased with where you are today as far as what you've done with it. I thank you, because I know you, in, in the meantime, you still have a department, a couple, a couple of things that you have to do.
Yeah, we're trying to pave a couple of roads out there.
Yeah, so seriously, for taking this on as you've had, I, I compliment you for the work.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
One more thing. You know, we've talked about neighborhoods, you know, Hollywood, Gilbert. Where were you at when you have a situation where there's only one or two homes affected by this kind of thing? And, you know, as far as going to an urban services district would be impossible to do, you know?
That is where I think where the inmate crews might play in better. Again, going back to that, we've not been getting a lot of inmates recently. And the thought process was, okay, so if we, say we only get maybe four a day on a regular basis, maybe we can make arrangements with the Department of Corrections, say, for a two-week period, can we get a dozen inmates coupled with some of our crews to go out and clean some of these areas? Because you're right, there are houses, you know, particularly down in the Bi-Valve area where there's, you only have one or two folks that are draining to a ditch that needs to get cleaned out. And the urban service district just wouldn't make financial sense. You can't take that price tag and divide it between one or two homes and have it work out. So I think in those cases, we're going to have to see some type of ditch cleaning crew go through there. It's just a matter of trying to figure out what resources we have that we can leverage against those issues. And it might be, you know, some of the, you know, particularly in Bi-Valve, some of the problems being title, some of them being that they just, their ditches have filled up with sediment over the years, and trying to find some way to get in there. And with the soil conditions out there, even with the, you know, a mini excavator, it's still just going to sink. And it's, it's, it's a, I'm aware of that condition. And we are actively kicking around ideas and shooting holes in them and trying to figure out ways to solve that, that condition.
I guess in the title areas, if you clean the ditches out, we'll come in that much faster, right?
Yeah. And fortunately, the citizens that are under title problems, they're aware of that. They're not expecting us to fix the tide. So.
That's a good thing. They want you to fix the rain.
Yes, fix the rain.
Are you documenting all the ditches? Like, are they named or numbered or anything?
They're not named. In Jack Lennox's department, Frank McKenzie has a very good GIS map of all of the little ditches and swales. And I mean, I won't say it's 100%, but when you look at it, it's like, wow, that's got to be like 99%. Because it's, you know, it looks like when you're looking at someone's arteries.
Be nice if you document all the ditches and what progress has been made.
Larry, in the agricultural community, they have what they call red line ditches, which is more of a drainage ditch, and other ditches finger off. And a lot of those are called branches, I think. They have names. If you look at some of the maps, they'll have names of some of them. You know, there's one down to Willards that I'm familiar with. They call them a red line ditch. And they designate them that way for some reason. I guess they're more of a flow to them or whatever. So.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Good work.
Next item we have on the agenda is a discussion reference to charter amendments the council was considering.
Did I skip one?
No, I'm saying switch it.
That's a good idea. If that's okay with council, is it okay with council? Councilman Kilmer is suggesting we move forward with the audit review first, and then we'll do the charter seconds. And so, Mr. Clay is here. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning.
How are you? We're still morning.
Good, good.
Everyone got a copy? Okay. My name is Mike Kleger. I'm a partner with PKS and Company. And we were requested to address some follow-up questions that I guess the council had from our previous presentation, which was, I believe, in January. And this relates to the June 30, 2017 audit. So what I've done is I've taken those questions that we had and kind of written out the questions and some answers. And then we can go through any additional comments or questions you might have after that. But just starting on page one, the question was regarding the inventory, the physical inventory at the Public Works Department was not done at year-end, June 30 of 17. And how did that impact the financial statements? And what we did there was, there was a physical count that was done subsequent to year-end. And then we did some rollback procedures to get, to come up with a June 30th, an estimated June 30th balance by taking reports of materials that were used, as well as invoices for any subsequent purchases, and rolling that back to a June 30th figure. The dollar amount of that is not totally significant to the overall financial statements. And we felt that that was a good process since we started with a physical count, even though it was subsequent to year-end. So that's how we came up with the June 30th number at that point. There was a related question to that was who actually made those adjustments? And those were posted by the Finance Department to the general ledger after that reconciliation was prepared. Item 1B there mentions, can you give examples of new controls put in place at the department, basically to ensure compliance with the inventory going forward for the June 30, 18 upcoming audit? Public Works Department has put in place quarterly test counting rather than annual. So we did notice and we did receive documentation that there were test counts done in December of 17, as well as March of 18. And we are, our staff is scheduled for the observing the actual June 30, 18 physical count for this coming audit year-end. So those are the new controls that have been put in place to deal with the inventory, physical inventory count. The question one at the bottom of page one, it says, can you please comment on current staffing levels as it relates to internal controls? I want to refer back to our audit communications report at year-end. We did note that there were no material weaknesses and internal controls were noted during the 2017 audit. However, with staffing changes and vacancies and personnel changes that always occur, it is important to monitor internal control processes and review those and analyze those, not only at the audit, but throughout the year. And I think part of that process and procedures rudely would fall in the Internal Audit Department because they're available year-round to kind of monitor controls. But that's certainly, internal controls are something we look at, really starting in the planning phase for an audit, where we look at where the potential significant problems are. And that's kind of our starting point. So we look at the internal controls throughout. But really, as far as monitoring, that's kind of a year-round process. It does not change. Top of next page, question two was, do you have any concerns related to debt levels and the fund balance for the county as of June 30, 17? The short answer to that is no, at this point. Approximately, the county has used approximately 60% of its debt capacity as of June 30, 17. So it leaves about 30, about $91 million still available at that point before you would run into a capacity issue. As it relates to the unassigned fund balance, the balance was about $39 million at June 30, 17. Just from a statistical standpoint, the Government Finance Officers Association, which kind of collects and monitors information nationwide, recommends a minimum of 15% unassigned fund balance, or 15% of general fund expenditures is unassigned fund balance. And as of June 30, 17, the county was doubled that amount. Also, as a side note, bonding agencies, rating agencies have not expressed any concerns, to my knowledge, on that. The next question was, did we receive adequate cooperation from management during the audit process? The answer is yes. We had mentioned that in our auditor's communication package that we had disagreements with management, and also that we received full cooperation from all county personnel during the audit for 17. Item three on this page two, as the county made material corrections to the budget for the year-end or audit, can you explain the impact of these adjustments, if any, to the auditing process? And can you also comment on audit adjustments in general? Budget adjustments did not, or do not really impact our audit process. It's considered supplementary information and is not really direct audit procedures. We do inquiries and analytical procedures related to the budget versus actual, but it's really not some area that we specifically audit, the budget. There was a significant audit, a significant budget amendment that did not get reflected in last year's financial statements because of the timing of when it was actually passed and completed. It was subsequent to our audit report, but was noted in the notes to the financial statements that there was such an adjustment made. Oh, as far as a comment on, or a question regarding comment on adjustments in general, I'll refer you to the next question because I was dealing with adjusting journal entries. It says, we reviewed, and I believe this we is referring to the Internal Audit Department, reviewed 83 adjusting journal entries. The number of entries seems to be lower than the prior year. Can you please comment on the year-end adjustments in general? Basically, the total adjusting entries were probably about half of what we normally experienced. And that generally occurred because we deferred and started the field work much later, about three weeks later than normal. So, gives the Finance Department time to reconcile and record many more adjustments prior to us coming out. So that kind of reduced significantly the number of adjustments that we had. And they did a good job on trying to close the books and records prior to us starting our field work. Question five, says we noticed a large amount of adjustments to investment in fixed assets. Can you comment on specific entries of 60, 61, and 62? These adjustments were specifically for solid waste, airport and the civic center. And it's not unusual, especially in enterprise funds, to have to reclassify asset purchases from an expense item to a capital item. You may recall that enterprise funds are kind of treated more like a business. For example, with fixed assets, they're capitalized and depreciated versus, let's say, general fund accounting where they're essentially expensed. So no, those were not unusual entries at all. Item six is to explain adjusting journal entry 70 for $992,000 for the Health Department accounts payable. Is this a routine adjustment? This was actually not an auditor's adjustment. We posted the adjustment provided to us by the county. And this is a relative routine adjustment because oftentimes their invoices are delayed, or there's payables that come in subsequent to year-end that have to be recorded well after year-end. And so that's not unusual to see that happen. Question number seven is to explain the wind case reserve adjustment for $617,000 and its impact on the county's financials and who made the calculations. The wind case adjustments are determined by the state based on amended tax returns that have been filed by taxpayers. And they actually provide that calculation to the county and the amount that should be in the reserve. And it did go up significantly. We were around $238,000 the previous year, and we had to make an adjustment for another $617,000, bringing it to, excuse me, $855,000 reserve balance at June 30, 17. As far as the impact on the financial statements, essentially that 600,000 comes out of unassigned or available fund balance and gets into an assigned fund balance account. So basically, that's, that does get pulled out from your available fund balance. And the final question that we had was that there were numerous adjustments related to airport grants. Can you please comment on adjusting entry 115 and 119? Adjusting entry 115 was related to removing a portion of the grants that related to the county and not the airport. And that's, you generally get like one large grant, some of that's airport-related, some of it's county-related. So that was just a reclassification entry to the county funds. And adjustment number 119, during our testing for grants for the airport, we did notice that there should have been some receivables that were not recorded, that we subsequently picked up with adjustment entry 119, and then amounted to about $108,000. And those, I think, are the comments and questions that we had. Follow-up one, I'll be glad to respond to any of those or address any other questions you might have.
Question two, do you have any concerns related to the debt levels and the fund balance levels for the county?
Yes.
The sentence, the, can't get that one out. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum fund balance of 15%.
Right.
General funds managers. And if $630,000, 2017, the county was double that amount. Is there any other agencies that reflect on that question that would, I mean, is that the only people that you?
Well, no, you, well, you may be able to look at, like, other counties within your own state. I mean, certainly you can get information from the states. But no, this is kind of a, I'll call it nationwide statistical study that's done, and we kind of use that. But no, yes, you can definitely get it by individual counties that have the same information.
I firmly believe in a nice fund balance.
Yeah. And that, as I mentioned, that's a minimum recommendation. So, I mean, obviously, every locale, every municipal local government is going to be different. As far as what they determine is a needed fund balance, but that's kind of a minimum. That's not kind of a saying, hey, that's our goal. That's what we want to have as a balance.
Yeah. The problem we run into when we have a nice fund balance is some people want us to spend it.
Yes. That can occur. Sure.
Laura, would that be a good idea to check with Mako? Maybe Mako could tell us what normally counties and.
Yeah, that's very easily available.
But it'd be nice to know what other averages are. So, you know.
It's right in our credit sheet.
Yeah.
Any other questions or follow-up from me? Mr. Cannon?
I guess more so in layman's terms on the first question, reference to Public Works.
Yes.
And you're saying, and as inventory as of 630 rolled back and adjusted for reports of materials used.
Right.
What are you saying there?
Well, the inventory was done subsequent to year-end. So there were, items are obviously purchased and used beyond June 30. So we had to have a cutoff point. So whatever that was, I'm thinking it was somewhere in the first quarter or the year, the count was done. And then we had to go back and take, items that were purchased subsequent to year-end would have to be subtracted from that number because they were, or items that were used during that timeframe. So basically, it's just a matter of trying to account for what happened to those goods in the three months subsequent to when they should have done the physical count. So it's an estimate. It's not going to be an exact number, but it's something that we felt was reasonable by time. It wasn't like it was, you know, nine months or a year later, we're trying to do this. It was a couple of months after year-end. So it wasn't hard to do a rollback test on that.
Was it a large difference?
No, it was not. I don't have the specific number with me, but it was not a big difference.
Okay. And then number eight, when you're talking about as far as the airport grants.
Yes.
Number 119. When you say that various grant receivables need to be recorded, what exactly was the particular situation?
Well, I don't know this specific. I mean, it's a little old at this point. But, no, I can tell you what generally would happen is we would test grant receipts subsequent to year-end and would determine whether this should have been recorded as a receivable at year-end. And that's how this particular item came up. And again, there's a lot of grant monies that run there through there, particularly at the airport. And 108,000 is not terribly a large amount. But that's, the reason it comes up is because we do subsequent receipt collections after year-end and determine whether there should have been a receivable year-end or not. And that's how that particular item came up.
So that's, I guess, for whatever the shortcomings were, that's been addressed?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions?
And we'll assume we'll be doing some planning, obviously, for the upcoming audit, and we'll involve the council on what we're, what we're planning on doing for the current year. So.
Any questions from staff?
I don't have any.
Ms. Roser?
As far as that inventory goes, I do have an update. I haven't had a chance to write the memo. But we had a meeting with the folks out at Rose Division last week, and they are updating their new software. They're still running parallel systems at this point. But they're confident that they'll have everything up and running in the new inventory system, which is cloud-based by the end of the fiscal year. So we're monitoring that and looking forward to it. And we offered to help with the count.
Thank you, Ms. Roser. Mr. Clay?
Thank you.
Good thing.
All right. All right, thank you all very much. Any other questions or things, I'd feel free to contact us.
Yeah, we appreciate you following up.
Absolutely, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go back on the agenda to work session item number two, which is the proposed charter amendments. I believe that we want to try to finalize this today so that we can have a public hearing for our first meeting in June. Correct, Mrs. Hurley?
It is correct.
Okay.
I believe Mr. Taylor has been working on those.
Yeah, this is, this is round three now of the discussions, work session on the proposed charter amendments. If you recall, we started with 10 originally on a list that was drawn up, I think primarily by suggestions from members of council. We're now down to three. Seven have been eliminated for various reasons. One of them, we discussed earlier today, has having. One of them, we discussed earlier today, has having to do with the internal auditor, and we feel that that can be addressed by code amendment rather than charter amendment, as I said a little while ago. Of the three that are left, one of them was to amend possibly Charter Section 304(c) to remove the words "by resolution" with regard to contracts that the county council might make for various services, including forensic auditor services, and I think this is an outgrowth of the situation from last year. Discussing this with Mrs. Hurley, I think that two of us kind of feel that this would be a little bit edgy to do under some of the laws that have to do with how the council should operate and also the Open Meetings Act. We believe that there would be ways in which the goal that the council was interested in, and that was if you were doing a forensic audit, to not tip off the people that you might be looking at that they were being audited. I think if we got to a contract again, it could perhaps be prepared a little bit differently, and some of that shielding could be done then. Obviously, it wouldn't shield the fact that you were contracting with a forensic auditor, but the particular subject, I think, could be shielded. So, I think on that one, probably it should be put to rest. If there's no discussion on that point, I'll just move on to the other two, which are still on the playing field, so to speak, and a good bit longer.
Okay.
We'll start with number ten on the list, which would be the transfer of appropriations. And right now, under the Charter Section 708(a), it provides for transfers of appropriations between general classifications of expenditure within the same office or department may be authorized by the county executive. Transfers between offices, departments, institutions, boards, commissions, or other agencies of the county government may be made during the last quarter of the fiscal year and then only on the request of the county executive and with the approval of the county council. Based on our discussions previously in those other two rounds, my understanding is that the council wants to essentially expand this somewhat in terms of the council's role in any kind of a transfer, be it between, within a department or between departments. And on that basis, we've looked at language, Ms. Hurley and I, primarily from other county charters, because there are others that have, do it other ways than we're doing it now, and we've come up with the proposal that's at page, that one is on page two fifteen of the briefing book. And there's also at your table, I think, today, a printout of that page on which there are a few interlineations and amendments by insertion. Just, I think you've got it, it's a single page. At the top, it says, "Draft May seven, two thousand eighteen, Ray proposed revision of Section 708 of the Wycomico County Charter." And the reason for those particular revisions, the interlineations, are that I've asked Mr. Roser to kind of look this one over in terms of what would be normal accounting methodology and for his suggestions in terms of trying to make something that's as reasonable and workable as possible, and he suggested those changes. I'll get to them in a minute, but just going through the several items there that we've come up with, number one, the county exec, and I'll just read the text of them. The county executive may transfer then unencumbered appropriations in the expense budget within the same department, agency, or office and within the same fund, provided that the county council has given at least fifteen days' advance written notice of any such transfer in cumulative excess of, and there's a dollar sign there with a blank because I've left the amount up to you folks. Continuing, and I'll just repeat just briefly, in cumulative excess of blank dollars, except in the case of an emergency, in which case such notice shall be given as soon as possible but no later than five days after the transfer. As I say, this is based to some extent on language that you find in other county charters. Do you want me to discuss them individually, or do you want me to go through each of the several items there? Because you have, there's a dollar amount that needs to be decided.
Is there an average dollar amount that you see?
I really, I defer to Mr. Roser in the sense that I haven't been involved in this for long, and I think there's only one manner that I've been involved in period, so I can't give you an average based on that.
How about other counties?
Other counties, yeah.
Well, some counties just, they have it required for anything. Yeah, I don't have that at the tip of my tongue. I mean, if you want me to just throw something out, I would say maybe a thousand dollars. I mean, the idea is to prevent having to come in for every, everything under the sun, and it's only a notification provision. It's just that you all would have notice of any transfers within a department that would exceed a certain amount, wouldn't require approval, require notice.
Are you suggesting that the dollar amount would be included in the charter?
Yes. I mean, unless you don't want to have one and just make for anything.
Is there any way to keep the charter memory as simple as possible, but in the charter, in the charter amendment, to reference a document that we could have that would be separate, that could be changed without having to go through that whole process again?
Well, we could provide that the amount can be changed by resolution from time to time. Then you're going to have to set it by resolution.
Wayne would love to say so.
Go ahead, Wayne. Yeah, if you want.
I'm comfortable with notifying council of any such transfer, so, I mean, I wouldn't, it's from a ministerial standpoint, it's easier for us just to simply say that any such transfer, we have to notify council of that transfer. I think establishing a dollar amount, I don't want to have to remember or have my department heads, you know, remember, oh, it's a thousand or five thousand or five hundred. I'm happy to notify you of all of them.
Well, it kind of brings up a point that I was wondering initially is, what's the purpose of notifying the council? I mean, are you saying that this has to have council approval, or I don't understand what the purpose of saying?
Well, I think it was because you all wanted to be notified.
Right.
I mean, that was, that was the sense of the discussions.
Yeah, I think if there's movement inside the budget, John, that, you know, because the council approves the budget in the form that it is approved, if a department finds, and it happens, if a department finds that we have to, you know, we have to move money from this account to this account because something's come up, you know, I certainly, you know, from a standpoint of transparency, don't have any issue at all with advising the body that approves the budget that that's happened and why it happened.
I don't know, was that the intention of the council, to be notified if something happened, or I thought it was to try to create some preventative measures that it just couldn't arbitrarily be done?
Well, I think it's both, you know. A few years ago, back, this was before this administration, probably six or seven years ago, I was on the Airport Commission, and the Airport Commission got some tractors and mowers from county roads just transferred to the, to the airport, and it was, there was no monies transferred, there was, they just ended up with it.
Transfer capitalized.
Yeah, let me say this, though. Bear in mind, now, this item we're talking about now is only transfers within a department.
Right.
We're going to get to between, in a minute here, yeah.
We're talking about the whole amendment. I mean, anyway, and there was no transfers of money, and, you know, at that time, roads was having, we were having problems with the budget because we were in a recession, and I guess my question was, how come they're just giving tractors to the airport? The airport at that time was a, what do you call it?
Enterprise.
Enterprise fund. So, you know, so I think, I think this just cleans up the process of knowing where the money's at and where it's going.
If you have questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Why does it happen?
Yeah, I mean, we sit at these budget meetings, we go through there and say, well, this, you know, maybe we should cut this amount, this amount, this amount, and then, but then if there's money being transferred within the departments, it's, you know, I mean, it'd be nice to know that, to be like, well, you know, we wanted this amount cut out, but money was transferred to use that. I mean, we don't have power over that, but at least we know, so.
And I agree a hundred percent.
And that's within the department, but if you look down, it talks about between departments later in the, so, so this is within departments, and I think you just kind of build on that is what happens with between departments and things like that, so.
The main concern that the council had was between.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess we could simplify this by just taking out then, based on what Mr. Strasberg just said, the words in cumulative excess of dollars. So, there's no, there's no threshold?
I think that this whole idea of within a department is just a common policy that we could establish between the executive and legislative branch of government. You have to have a charter member do that. I think the charter member comes into play between departments, and I think, I don't want to muddy the waters, I don't think we needed a charter member to discuss both. Again, if it's, if it's within a department, certainly we can establish a policy with the executive.
It's an internal policy.
Sure.
Right.
And say, hey, you'll let us know this, right? And then when it does or doesn't happen?
Is the consensus then that you don't, in terms of these, within the department transfers, you don't want any notice at all?
I don't think, no.
They can do it, no notice?
I don't think it warrants a charter amendment. I think it's something that we can establish with an open relationship between the legislative and executive branches.
Yeah, but you just don't always know what the relationship's going to be between the legislative and executive, and I'd rather have it set perpetuity that that's the policy is that.
Okay.
I just personally am far more comfortable with council being aware, because council is the appropriating body, I'm far more comfortable with you being aware of that activity, and I would rather it just simply be, when it occurs, you're notified.
I appreciate that.
And you're aware of it, and you have the opportunity to question me and where the department head is to, why did this become necessary? Why did we have to do this? You know, I certainly don't do it willy-nilly. I never approve any internal departmental transfer without real justification, like, why, why did this happen? Did we have a mistake in the budget? Why are we doing this? Why do we have to do this?
We're getting full cooperation from the executive branch, let's take advantage of it here.
Julie, why can't?
My reason for bringing it up is only that I would hope to keep these charter members as simple as possible.
This is pretty simple. It's not that, it's not as bad.
Well, this is phase one of this charter, right?
Yeah, but the other, the other matters are distinct matters, so I think they should be in separate paragraphs.
But if somebody doesn't agree with the notification, then what good is notifying us? I mean, there should be some actual, the council approved one budget, and then there's going to be a change in the budget, maybe that should be approved.
I didn't find any county that on these, within the department-type transfers, has any requirement that it be approved by council. I only, I only looked at county exec counties, so I didn't look at all twenty-three.
It's within the department, so it's a little bit.
Just a formality.
All right, Mr. Taylor. Well, just to finish up on this one then, is the idea then just strike out the thing about the dollars?
I think so.
Sure. Okay, we'll just take that out then. The second part of that is, "The county council may transfer then unencumbered appropriations in the expense budget between departments, agencies, offices, or funds by ordinance and upon written recommendation of the county executive stating the reasons for the transfer." Now, this does two things that are different from what we have now. First of all, it eliminates that last quarter of the year, so these types of transfers can be made at any time during the year, has to be done by ordinance and upon recommendation of the executive. So, that's a change. The language is somewhat different from what is there now because it points out that the county council may make the transfer, and that's realistically what happens now. The county executive recommends, and the county council approves, and it would be an ordinance amending the budget. So, that's, and that is language that is found in a lot of other county charters, that formulation, the county council may transfer.
What you're saying, Mr. Taylor, is right now, the executive can recommend that to the council in the last quarter only, and this would open it up throughout the entire fiscal year.
Seeing no reason why not. I mean, if some need arises to do that, why shouldn't it be done? It was the thinking, and again, most, a lot of counties don't have this last quarter requirement.
So, that actually expands the executive's power a little bit?
No, because it still has to be done by county council approval.
But he can do it during the three other quarters of the year instead of just the last quarter.
Yeah, and the council could say no. I mean, so, I mean, it really doesn't, not much of an expansion.
Yeah, well, I mean, it gives both branches more power to alter the budget.
When you're saying other counties don't do it, are you suggesting that we can't do it because other counties don't do it?
No, I'm saying that I think for flexibility, there's no reason to provide for that type of transfer only in the fourth quarter. I mean, you've got control because you have to pass it by ordinance.
Well, we've started with a concern about transferring between departments.
Right.
And now we're at, now this charter amendment is now, looks like it's going to be a half a page long.
Well, it is, because there's another, there's yet another item on it that you all wanted, and that is probably the longest and most complex of the batch.
It's because I didn't write it. It's what I had.
See, I think the underlying reason, and I wasn't, I wasn't here when the charter was written, I wasn't at the table, but I suspect that the reason for limiting that to the fourth quarter of the year is that by the fourth quarter of the year, you've got a fairly good idea of where each one of your departments is going to land in terms of what their budget execution is going to be. I would personally be very reluctant to make those kinds of interdepartmental transfers early in the budget year because you don't know what's going to happen. I'm reluctant to make those kind of transfers until we get through the winter months because that's when you can really have, you know, things happen, so I think that was the original rationale. If council has an appetite to give the executive more flexibility, I'm certainly not going to argue against it, but I don't recall in the time I've been here coming up against an issue where I felt I needed to take money from one department and transfer it to another department, maybe in the fourth quarter. I don't even remember that happening.
I can't recall.
I can't remember it ever happening, so.
It's not from contingency.
You know, so, again, if you want to give the executives from here out more flexibility in that regard, you know, okay, you still have to approve it, but I think the underlying rationale was, you don't know where you're going to be on the budget until you get into this time of year.
Actually, I think the, I mean, I think the rationale was, they copied this out of the two county charters, charters, or the main models.
Yeah, could have been.
And I think at least one of those has now changed and eliminated the four months just because of the idea of flexibility. I mean, if you don't want to do it, you don't have to do it. You can say no, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the fourth quarter restriction never, never bothered me. I don't think it was an encumbrance on the council or the way we were governing.
Well, I mean, I guess the option then, I can just add in the language at the start of two during the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, or, you know, words to that effect, and eliminate it to that, just like it is now.
I thought it was already in. I thought that's what was already there.
No, I said, I've made that suggested change to eliminate the fourth quarter restriction because I believe it provides flexibility. You don't have to use it. Mr. Strasberg or his successor doesn't have to ask for it.
We're trying to keep, I think the purpose here, Bob, is to keep this at a minimum for the public.
Verbal.
Verbal watch, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we had ten to begin with, and the reason we cut it down to three was simply because we're trying not to have so much information for the public in general to absorb.
Well, if you want to keep that the same, then we'll just add in there during the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, and then it'll be exactly like it is now.
Or if it's exactly like it is now, I'm not getting it, if it's exactly like it is now, why are we doing anything? If you're suggesting we make it exactly like it is now? I'm confused.
You just say no in the fourth quarter.
No, but, so, it's seven, sorry, seven oh eight a, you want, your proposal to replace the entire a with this section here, so if we repeal what's in a now, well, why don't we just keep the languages there in the charter now and then just add these on as a one and a two, you know, basically?
If that's, if that's what you want to do, that's fine, and...
Yeah, keep the languages there now and then.
We would then just get down to...
On your current one and three, you just take out two and make that, make three too.
I don't think the way you are now discussing it, one and two would even be necessary if you want to just keep it exactly the way it is now. Now, if you don't want the notification provision about the transfer within a department, well, then what we've got now would fit that mold perfectly. If you want notification, then we're going to have to add for notification.
Do we want notification or not?
Yes.
So we will then have to stick that in with what we have now. So that essentially brings us down to three, which is a completely new item, and it's a new item because you all indicated you wanted something like that. And that's the language that I, with some discussion with Laura, have come up with, and that Mr. Roser has suggested some changes on.
This, I'm assuming, came from another county's charter?
I don't know that this is from another county's. It's what you all wanted, and I've tried to formulate something that I thought was the subject of the discussion in our first two rounds.
You know, I don't know, I'll give some thoughts on this about... We went back to when we were building the collector road by the landfill. You won't hear when that was going on, but the county was using county roads. Apparently, there was diesel fuel being used from the solid waste. They were co-mingling a lot of stuff over there. And I remember the day that, it was before we found out about the thefts that were going on. Ra Sharma, Pat Peterson.
Two thousand eight.
I forget who else it was sitting there, but anyway, we were asking about diesel fuel. You know, we'd seen that the gas usage had gone up. Well, it's gone up because we're using diesel fuel for the collector road, using equipment over there. Collector Road was being built using diesel fuel from the solid waste division, you know? There wasn't any transfers going on with all this stuff. And of course, at the same time, there were thefts taking place, so...
Understood.
I think this kind of, even with equipment, and basically the thing it says in here, other than real estate capital assets may not be used regularly except under extraordinary circumstances. You know, extraordinary circumstances would be like county roads going out, I guess, and cleaning the airport during a snowstorm, right? So, you know, that would be okay, but on this other, as far as things, that's why I think this thing, this part is important.
What is it you're trying to accomplish here? Just so I understand what you're trying to accomplish.
Mr. Taylor, you want to read the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful.
You want to read number three?
You want me to read that? Okay, and I'll try to add in the changes by Mr. Roser, so if I goof that up, I apologize. A depreciable capital asset, regardless of when and how acquired, may be transferred between departments, agencies, offices, or funds by the county council by resolution and upon written recommendation of the county executive describing the asset and stating its book value and the reasons for the transfer, provided that in the case of an asset having a book value of less than, and again, blank dollars to be filled in, the transfer shall not require passage of a resolution unless requested by two or more members of the council within 10 days after receipt of such recommendation by the council administrator. Other than real estate or any other items designated by resolution of the county council, a depreciable capital asset may not be used regularly except under extraordinary circumstances by a department, agency, office, or fund unless it is purchased or otherwise acquired for or subsequently transferred to such user.
I think, Bob, in that statement, I would be more comfortable if it started out by saying that the assets, et cetera, may be transferred between departments by written recommendation of the county executive and approval of the county council by resolution. Because I think that whole process, I think in everything we do, it should be recognized that the initiation process should be by the county executive with consent of the council. It seems backwards. It seems as if you're all of a sudden allowing a council to do something, but then you say, if the executive gives them the written resolution, well, keeping a chronological order, I'd like it to be maintained similar to the rest of the charter where the executive makes that proposal and the council has to approve it. Simple enough or not?
If the idea is to try to simplify this language or shorten it, I don't think it's going to do that. It would just be moving, or moving rather, some of the phrases from one place to the other.
Right. I'm just saying that I think that the county executive should be recognized as the one that is initiating the process, and it has to be done with the approval of the council.
If you look through your charter and most anything else, it always recognizes it that way.
Yep.
I mean, but the purpose of this is to recognize, you know, it's like transferring funds between departments. It's just kind of expanding that to equipment, assets, things like that, so that it's it's the same principle, it's just to include another set of things to be transferred between departments, so...
Are we looking at the depreciated value of the asset?
Not quite. That's lingo I don't understand.
He put in your book value.
That would be the blue book definition of book value would be cost less depreciation.
Yeah, so our depreciated value, our depreciated value on the books. The thing that I think I heard that could be problematic is a, is usage by a department of an asset assigned to another department. So, for instance, we have pool cars.
Yeah, pool cars.
Pool cars. And virtually every department in the county uses those pool cars, although they're booked as an asset of the executive department. So I get a little, I get a little nervous about hamstringing the normal operation. As you said, you know, we've got crews going out to clear snow. I don't care where the truck comes from as long as it's clearing snow on a county property. So that part of the language, I think, is somewhat problematic in terms of the day-to-day operation of the county. The physical transfer of an asset from one department to another, I get that, I understand that. It's just a matter of a reasonable threshold. You know, if we're moving a file cabinet from planning and zoning to HR, I, you know, I don't want to get...
Aren't your pool cars designated pool cars? I mean, that's your designation, right, so...
Well, we have two, two or three pool cars that are assigned to the executive department, carried on the executive department's books that any department in the county can reserve and use.
If I may offer, when someone uses one of your pool cars, you're not necessarily transferring that asset to another department.
Correct. It was the language that, you know, the...
No, I see what Wayne's talking about where it says the capital asset may not be used regularly.
Regularly, and those pool cars are used regularly by, you know, everybody in the county. So, you know, that was the only part of the language that made me nervous.
But I think the word regularly, though, saves you, Wayne, because if they're being used by X department today and Y department tomorrow, they're not being used regularly by X or Y. So I think that's, you know, I think that really covers that waterfront, although I guess we could tweak it somewhat, but I don't think it needs much tweaking, to be honest with you.
You don't have a pool car that says that, say, the health department uses all the time, right?
Each, you know, each one of the major county departments has its own pool car, but the executive also has at least two pool cars, maybe even a third, that are available to anybody to use in the event that their assigned pool car is being used. People traveling all the time.
Well, under this, it says, other than real estate or any other item designated by resolution. So I think it would be simple to be like, all right, so, you know, pool cars, you know, we could have a list from you guys under resolution and say, all these things can be used regularly by other departments if that was... I mean, this isn't an ironclad prohibition on things being used regularly, you know, as long as the resolution's passed, then...
Yeah, I would like it just simply to not get too torturous.
Yeah.
And I would also like it to include terms that aren't subject to broad interpretation.
I agree, and I think that term may not be used regularly is the, because of that. Because that right there is a broad interpretation. I just think if it's being, I don't think there needs to be any qualifiers whether it's being used regularly or not. I mean, that speaks for itself. I think if you're going to use such a term like that, it must, needs to be much more definitive than just used regularly.
I guess the thought process, again, is that, okay, so if you wanted to do an end run around this, you could say, well, I'm not transferring the asset to another department, I'm just going to let them use it all the time. And that's what you're trying to prevent.
Right.
I don't know how you craft that language, but I understand the intent.
I don't understand, I'm not comfortable with the section that references requested by two or more members of the council within 10 days after receipt of the recommendation by the county administrator. I just think we should leave it as a very simple process. The executive makes the request, the council has to prove it.
With, then you don't want any threshold?
I don't personally.
So every single transfer?
I think we probably have a threshold.
I don't mind a threshold, but I don't want this to council members.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, a threshold like, you know, again, my desk.
So we'll take out, we'll take out the unless recommended, unless requested by two or more members of the council.
Should we limit it to capital items?
Yeah, to the rest of that sentence.
I think it really is capital item.
It is limited, yeah.
You know, that gets to the definition of capital item.
For like $5,000 or $10,000, you know?
See, some assets at $5,000 wouldn't be capitalized because they don't have a... So, you know, it gets a little, it gets a trick. All I'm saying is that I don't want to get into, you know, hey, I want to move this file cabinet from this department to that department, this desk, or this, you know, desktop calculator from here to their computer. I understand what you want to prevent and what you want to be aware of and approve. I get that. I'm just asking that we don't tie ourselves collectively in knots, chasing rabbits down holes.
If I may, I think the way you do that is setting threshold high enough where that doesn't happen.
So what?
Yeah, what do you think, Steve and Mike?
I think this last sentence after may not be used regularly, I think it's redundant. I think what we established up in the beginning, saying that any transfers have to be approved by the county council, is sufficient. I don't think having to reiterate whether it's used regularly or not has anything to do with it, it's just it's transferred, period.
Well, I think you, I think you do need to recognize extraordinary circumstances, but again, when there's natural disaster, doesn't matter where it comes from, they should be able to use equipment, you know, across the department.
Right.
I mean, and that's not used regularly, I mean, that's, hopefully, we don't have regular natural disasters. So they need some flexibility. I mean, we can't have an emergency session of the county council to approve using, you know...
That's what I'm trying to...
Yeah.
During a blizzard, some departments may need every four-wheel drive in the county.
That's what I'm trying to...
That's the extraordinary circumstances.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so we have to leave some leeway.
All right.
What do we think about that dollar, Bill?
If I may, the budget actually breaks out the capital assets. You've got under 5,000 category for furniture, under 5,000 for certain other capital assets, and then you have the over 5,000. So perhaps that $5,000 mark is a good place to start.
Sure.
Let me do this. Let me read what I think you all want.
You'd get a big price.
Yeah, I may not get it right because there are a lot of lines here I've made, but it would start like this. Upon written recommendation of the county executive describing the asset and stating its book value and the reason for the transfer, comma, a depreciable capital asset, regardless of when and how acquired, may be transferred between departments, agencies, offices, or funds by the county council by resolution. Period. Now, let's see, pardon me, not a period, it would be a comma. Provided that in the case of an asset having a book value of less than $5,000, the transfer shall not require passage of a resolution, period. New sentence. With me?
May I just suggest that, just say, an asset, you know, maybe, put in there just the threshold, and you don't need a separate clause for that, just put the, you know, depreciable asset over $5,000 and go from there. You don't need the separate clause to...
What clause is it you're referring to?
The, the, the last part of the sentence you said, you know, the...
Oh, the provided?
Yeah, the provided that, just say...
A depreciable asset having a book value in excess of $5,000. Okay, that's good.
Make it not as wordy? And say, you know, and then, then have probably something in there about extraordinary circumstances that...
Yeah, that's the first sentence. I think we've got that now. It would read something like this, a depreciable capital asset having a book value in excess of five, perhaps it should be of $5,000 or more. I think that would be the way, because that's the category, right? 5,000 or more. So it would read, upon recommendation of the county executive describing the asset and stating the reasons for the transfer, a depreciable capital asset having a value, having a book value in excess of $5,000 may be transferred between departments, agencies, offices, or funds by the county council by resolution. Period, end of sentence. And that would then take us down to that very last sentence that begins other than real estate. I don't know how, if at all, you want to change that.
I think we're going to mention the executive makes a request, though, right?
Well, that's at the start. That's at the beginning now.
Okay, sorry, I missed that.
Starts with that.
They wanted to put that at the start.
All right, Bob. All right. A depreciable capital asset, regardless of when and how acquired or extent of accumulated depreciation, may be transferred between departments, agencies, or offices or funds upon written recommendation of the county executive and approval by the county council by resolution.
Yes.
Okay, because I believe you had put the executives up in the beginning. I'm just leading with the capital asset part, okay? So again, a depreciable capital asset, regardless of when or where acquired, may be transferred between departments upon written recommendation by the county executive and approval by the county council by resolution. Recommendation shall describe the asset and state of its original cost and the reasons provided the case asset having an original cost of less than $5,000.
So you want to break that into two sentences with what the recommendation has to say?
And then the third sentence will be, other than real estate or other than other items designated by resolution, a depreciable capital asset may not be used reg, I've got used regularly in here again. I express my reservations on that, except under extraordinary service by department, et cetera.
I think you want to say with the current book value of $5,000 or less. Because you don't want to get yourself into going back and trying to determine, was the original cost of that computer more than $5,000? If its depreciated value is 5,000 or more, I've got to come to you, right?
I don't think so. I understand what you're saying, but the purpose of it is, leads back to what we originally approved in the budget. We're trying to maintain the integrity of what was approved in the original budget.
No, what I'm talking about capital assets, because we might have acquired the asset, John, you know, 15 years ago.
Right.
So going back to find out what the original acquisition, it's just better, it's quick for us to say, hey, what's the current book value of that asset on the books? Is it more than $5,000? We got to go to council to transfer that asset. If it's 2,500, we're just going to move it. It keeps us out of kind of chasing our tails with a lot of ministerial process.
Mr. President, if I can comment on that very quickly. I agree with Mr. Strasburg. Actually, the blue book definition of book value is just what he described. If he wants to add the word current, it may clear it up. But I have a question. When we talk about these assets being greater than or less than $5,000, and Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm thinking that a lot of the $5,000 assets that we purchase are in that category because they are not depreciated, they are expensed.
Correct.
So, we're not even talking about depreciable assets when we're at that level.
Just track them.
Exactly, and I think that maybe the five thousand dollar figure may be too low.
Can, this question for Dawn. Can, can we, it's gotta be classified originally as a depreciable asset.
Which means by definition, it's over five thousand dollars for the most part.
Correct. So is that.
The, do you wanna, you know.
Does that confuse the matter more, I guess?
Does it, and, and also does it add assets that don't need to be in this?
Because you're right, there's a lot of stuff for five thousand dollars or less that we just expense, you know, as, as what I call departmental capital. Because its useful life doesn't warrant carrying it as an asset on the books and depreciating it.
Plus you run the risk of burdening council with a lot of little stuff.
Yeah, if it's not originally classified as a depreciable asset, again, it doesn't fall into this, but then that gets very confusing.
Right.
When you try to draft a charter amendment that the public's gonna understand.
Right, so I'm thinking you may wanna go above that, uh, to, to the better fifteen thousand dollar level.
Understood, I'll leave it to you guys.
I just emailed what I wrote to the council. Um, all county council users, are you on that, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, but you're not, right?
Uh, no.
Okay, I have to separate.
Should he be?
So you have it on, you have it on your email right now, if you wanna pull it up and see what was, make it a little easier, I'm trying to remember what was just stated. Bob, I'll get it over to you too.
So you're recommending fifteen thousand dollars, Steve?
I think that would, yeah.
Why not ten?
I think when we go below that, that we're muddying the waters, as Wayne said, I, I agree with that.
Is that good, Wayne, that that, that's a lot fewer things?
But I think it puts us in the class of things that, that you're talking about.
I ain't got emails. Don't have, yeah. I don't know why. Go ahead, I mean, don't wait for me, I don't know why.
While we're waiting, Mr. Taylor, is there anything else you would like to expand on?
I got it.
On this one, what you said looks good to me, was you put your number.
It's had a number in it. Change it to fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I would change that to at least ten.
Okay, so if that's, um, what was originally our number three, um, what are we gonna do? We gonna attach that to number one?
Well, I think, I think what should happen here is, in, right now in section seven oh eight, there's an A which we've talked about a lot already, which is gonna stay the same with, I think, the provision being added for notification. Am I correct on that? That the only, in other words, on the transfers within a department, the only thing you want is notification.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, B, interfund borrowing wasn't proposed to be changed anyway, so that's still there as B. So I would say that what we've been talking about at number three, depreciable cast, capital asset item, should just be a subsection C.
Okay.
Okay, that'd be great.
Right, and the title of this section, I think, probably should be changed to Transfer of Appropriations for Capital Items, um, semicolon, Interfund Banking.
So it covers the waterfront of what's in that section.
Okay. Okay.
So that one, that takes care of that item.
Alright.
And we've got one more.
Yeah, and this one can take a few minutes too, although maybe not as long as the one we've just covered.
A few minutes?
Um, this is the, this is the proposal or the request that was on the list of ten regarding confirmation of appointments in section three fifteen A of the charter, uh, with the suggestion that would add Assistant Director of Administration and all deputy directors. And if you'll recall, at the last meeting or the last discussion on this, uh, Mr. Kilmer pointed out that there are two other sections of the charter that are closely related, four thirteen and four fourteen, that should at least be consistent, um, with this, uh, he, he thought, and I think there's some logic to that. In any event, uh, there's some complexity to it because right now, under the county's personnel system, deputy directors are part of the merit system of, of the personnel. And, uh, the only county that we could find that requires council appointment, pardon me, council confirmation of deputy directors appointed by the county executive, uh, is Harford County. And in Harford County, the deputy directors are not within their merit system, they're defined out by their charter. Just like in our case, department heads are defined out. So I think there, there's a problem there, if not in terms of what I would call the initial appointment of a deputy director. That would be under three fifteen, that's the, the first time someone is appointed to that particular position. The problem would arise after they've been appointed under section four thirteen, which is the section that requires after each election, that all of the department heads have to be reappointed essentially, appointed again. And if the deputy directors were added to that list and one wasn't reappointed, then there would be an issue because that person's under the merit system. So I think unless, unless that change is made to remove them from the merit system, um, there could be a, a potential problem there, um, and suggesting to me that it doesn't make sense to amend the, what I call the reappointment charter section, four fourteen, in regard to deputy directors. As I say, there's only one charter county that does that anyway, that's Harford. So, that's a thought on that now, how you all wanna proceed, I guess is something to discuss.
How do you remove them from the merit system?
Well, you'd have to amend the charter right now to, to, they would then be one of the exempted.
And that would be four thirteen?
Uh, no, it's the, it's in the personnel section of the, of the charter, I forget right offhand what it is.
That'd be a pretty big change to our.
Uh, six oh one, charter six oh one C, yes.
Yeah, if, if, if I might, um, I would urge extreme caution with this. You, you, you have to have continuity of operations and there, there is a, there's a significant reluctance of people to bubble up, if you will, or accept, um, appointed positions that are subject to, uh, political, um, confirmation. A lot of people just don't wanna be there. We're, we, we are one of the only counties, uh, that, that don't provide department heads and, and other appointees with some sort of contract so that they, uh, aren't totally, um, hanging out to dry. I, I think if you were to take the deputy directors that we have in the county, if you took that level and put them into the same, uh, political winds, if you will, and let's all be candid here, the political winds that prevail, uh, I, I think you run the risk of, A, losing people, you run the risk of people not wanting to accept those positions, and you're on the risk of disrupting continuity of operations. So I, I, I would, I would strongly urge you not to go down that path.
Well, I think in, in view of continuity of operations, if anybody is in the assistant position and they're not willing to break that bubble, I guess that's, that was the term you used, they're not willing to, to take that next step, they're not doing as much good as an assistant. If they're not willing to, to accept what hap, you know, the, um.
So you've got a person who's been with the county for twenty years and you want them to, 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 to step up to a deputy director level with them knowing that the next election, they could be not confirmed and out of a job?
Same as the director's position, to which they're supposedly, uh, supposed to be advancing towards anyway. What, are they just gonna decide when the director that they wanna, you know, that they wanna be in that situation?
I, I, I think there's a certain level.
Continuity of bias.
I think there's a certain level, uh, within the organization where you have to maintain what I'll call continuity. And, um, I, I just urge you to really think long and hard about this.
We, we understand, we do realize what territory.
I would be remiss if I, if I didn't say that as, as the director, uh, I, I know that I've asked a number of people if they would consider bubbling up, if you will, and they've said, I'm, I'm not gonna put my career at risk like that.
And, and I agree with you.
And I understand that.
But what, what are you actually accomplishing when you have an assistant director who doesn't want to go to that next level?
Because assistant directors do a lot of things that don't necessarily mean they're gonna become that next, you know, there, there, there are a lot of work assignments or a lot of responsibilities at that level that continue irrespective of who's the director.
You spend so much, you spend so much time training that into, and, and.
Which is why I don't want you to get rid of.
And getting, well, I'm, I'm, you're spending so much time preparing that person for the next level, and then when it's time to go to the next level, they go, oh, I'm gonna stay right here where I am. I don't think it makes much difference.
I think it's a mixed bag, John, I, I think with some of the people, yeah, you're priming that person to take that next step, but there are other people who do a great job at that level, that's what they're cut out for, and that's, and that, and that's just fine. You know, everybody doesn't have to bubble up to the next level.
And those same people you're talking about may not wanna go to the assistant director position. They're the same ones that have the opportunity to go to the director's position, so they're gonna stay.
If, if they wanna put themselves in a position where they're a political appointee, you know, they make that choice, but there are a lot of people who simply don't want to, um, don't want to put their careers at risk like that.
And I understand that, and then that's when you bring someone in from the outside.
We had a public works director serve for a number of years, you know, that was the assistant public works director. And he, he didn't wanna step up.
He wouldn't.
He wouldn't step up, but in reality, for him to be there, he should've done. And I think this is one of the reasons that this thing's important. I mean, um, I, I see your, your side of it too, but, um, you know, just. I mean, you could come out here and have all your assistant directors being, actually acting, acting directors.
Yeah, well, you know, I think that.
For a short period of time.
I thought we covered off on that, did we not need to trim it back?
Yeah, we did, we did.
Did we trim it back tonight? I mean, I understand your concern, Joe, but on the other hand, act, actually, we don't have that many deputy directors. So, you know, I don't know where the heartburn comes from, but I have heartburn with, hey, I've got good, stable, steady people who I know don't wanna be political appointees, and I know that when we advertise, uh, uh, for filling positions, when people find out that, hey, uh, I'm, I'm subject to a political confirmation and I don't have any contractual coverage, you know, a lot of people just don't wanna put themselves in that position.
Well, let's get back to the, I appreciate it, William, it's a valid point. How do we fine tune what we do have and would even know whether we're gonna go forward with it?
Well, let's, uh, for the moment, stay with the deputy directors to decide what we wanna do, or what you wanna do. You could either amend, what is it, three fifteen A, which is what I call the initial appointment. Uh, I don't think there would be a problem under the personnel system for the initial appointment. It would only be after the election for what I call the reappointment under the different section, um, four thirteen. So if you wanna at least have, uh, to confirm the, the initial appointment of a deputy director, that section could be changed to put them in it, that would be three fifteen A. And if you don't wanna do either, then I guess there wouldn't be any amendment of either section in that regard.
But we would still, if we were to use three fifteen A, and you're talking about four thirteen as well?
Well, four thirteen is the reappointment after election, yeah, for, uh, three fifteen A is the initial appointment.
I think both are fine, I mean, that's, it's not as if it's creating any more work for us as far as what we're trying to accomplish and, and changes here.
Well, but I think what Mr. Strasburg's just been talking about is, I think, primarily related to four fourteen, the reappointment.
The reappointment.
Yeah.
That's the issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if they're exempt, so, or a not exempt position, they are protected from being let go.
They have to go through the disciplinary process, right?
Yeah, so.
Right.
I mean, I think what Mr. Taylor's saying is, let's say, you know, these deputy directors come in and they're under the exempt position, and the council declines to reappoint them, means we've essentially fired them.
Correct, that's the issue.
But we didn't go through the, I, I mean, we, we can't fire them. So, because they're, they're under exempt.
In their minds, they're being fired without cause.
Yeah, yeah, so unless we remove them completely from the exempt category, which I, I wouldn't recommend doing, um, it seems that, just kind of a, a circle that we can't square there, you know, I mean, I mean, it, it's.
So we're, we're talking about making it, uh, an appointment process only and not with a reappointment?
Yeah, I mean, but, but then you get into the situation where there's, you know, well, yeah, I mean, I guess that's the, that's the situation, so. Yeah, I mean, i- i- if, so it, it wouldn't be quite the level of oversight that department heads have at that point?
Uh, that's acceptable, I think.
So you're saying if they get appointed once, um, in the future, they won't have to move up for reappointment at the next term?
Yeah, they're, they're still subject to being let go under the personnel system.
Under the personnel system.
But they can't be.
So what you're saying is, is that you would, what you're saying, Mark, is that you would want to approve the, uh, initial appointment? And that once a council made that initial, or approved that initial appointment, then that deputy director, uh, was, uh, in place and could only be removed through the, um, the, you know, the merit, the merit process?
Yeah, I understand that's not necessarily what I want, I'm saying that's how it'd have to work under this sort of amendment.
But I think, but I think that addresses the concern I have.
And that, I think that's cleaner as far as worrying about this, you know, whether or not the person, uh, what their expectations were when they came in.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, to, to me, it doesn't make sense to have the reappointment requirement if you can't effectively use it. There's no point in putting it in there. Yeah.
It's, I think it's a simple.
Now, that, so the idea then is to leave, or not to leave, but to put, put in deputy directors for the initial appointment in, in three fifteen, yeah.
Yes.
Now, there's, there's another aspect to this, and that's the assistant director of administration. And that position is one of the exempt positions from the merit system. So this same, or this issue about reappointment that we've been talking about doesn't apply the same way to the assistant director of administration as it does to the deputy directors. So I guess we have the same questions, do we wanna put that position in for appointment initial in three fifteen? And or in four, in four thirteen for reappointment after an election?
Just the initial.
Probably gonna have to give this some more thought.
No, we, we gotta wrap this up.
Just the initial.
Just the initial.
Not the reappointment.
But you have other.
Well, it could, you could be either, I mean, because you don't have that, you don't have that merit system issue on that particular position. He's not, he's not under the merit system, or that position's not under the merit system.
But again, for matters of simplicity, I don't, I don't wanna have to create too many different options for the public to review. Maybe, are you saying that, um, I, I mean, I'm okay with doing an initial appointment for the assistant deputy directors, I mean, assistant, um, administrator as well?
Yeah, oddly enough, I could not find anything, I may have missed something, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I couldn't even find in any, in the charter, I didn't look through everything in the code, about how the assistant director of administration is appointed. It just sort of, it's like Topsy, it just growed, I guess, but, uh, in any event, we have one, so, but. So, so it probably would also cover that waterfront, it would cover the waterfront about how he's appointed.
So when we put the amendment in, we would have to say, we would have to say the assistant director of administration and all other, or just would it be okay to say all, all assistant directors, right?
Well, there's, there's only one assistant director of administration, it's only one position.
But do we have to distinguish that position from all the other assistant directors when we make the charter amendment?
Um, that's a question I can't answer right off the top of my head because I think that the term deputy direct, director is used for the departments in the same, or almost the same way.
Okay, so the answer would be yes?
It is.
It would be assistant director and deputy director?
Right.
Right.
Trying to get the terminology.
Yes, yes, that's right. Assistant director of administration.
And all the deputy directors?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Right, okay.
Okay. An initial appointment, I think it's fine for all, all.
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay with everybody there?
Yes.
We're good?
Yeah.
Sure.
Now, if, now, Mr. Kilmer, at the last meeting, also raised questions about section 414. And this, I'm going to have to pull 414 here for a second, I've got so much stuff in front of me, but 414 is the one about the temporary appointments, if there's Right now, that covers only the director of administration and department and agency heads. It does not cover deputy directors, it doesn't cover the assistant director of administration.
Do you, well, do you have temporary deputy directors? So I guess that wouldn't matter then?
We typically don't do that.
Okay, I guess that...
Yeah, this isn't.
Okay.
Is there, should that be addressed at all? It doesn't seem to me that there's a, a particular need for it.
If you don't do it, no need.
Yeah, there's no...
We typically don't do it.
Okay.
One, one thing that occurred to me, I'll just mention it in passing, but the charter doesn't really provide what would happen if the director of administration suddenly disappeared, and who would, who would fill in?
Could you go away?
I think logically, it would be the assistant director of administration, but the charter, believe it or not, doesn't provide for that. And whether you want to live with it that way, or whether you want to make a modification, that this go, go around or not, it's up to you.
How do you change it without being a charter change?
Well, it'd have to, I think it would probably have to be.
It would have to be a charter change. All right, well, so far, so far, we're okay.
Let me get one more.
Are we, are we clear of the, are we clear on the language for all three?
Yes, I think we are.
All right. Can you refine everything that needs to be done and as very simplistic as possible, get it to us as exactly what it's going to be on the ballot?
Well, it'll be on this, what we've been talking about now, about these confirmations. It'll be very simple. We're just going to add deputy directors and assistant director of administration in section 315A.
So there'd only be two charter amendments, then? One with the transfers and one with the deputy and assistant directors?
Correct.
So it's just two charter amendments, okay?
Oh, boy. I thought there was a, okay, what was the third one we were looking at at our last meeting?
The third, the third one was the item about by resolution, removing the language by resolution that I mentioned at the start, that we think probably if we took the, the language out, there could be a problem. And the concern that was expressed, I think, can be handled in other ways.
That's right. Okay. So we're looking at two then, right? Council doesn't have the appetite to go back and pull the third one out of that list of ten? Right.
Let's just do two. Let's...
Leave it at two right now?
Okay.
Don't clutter them.
All right. Thank you, Wayne. Thank you very much. Okay, this time I entertain a motion to adjourn from open work session. I will take a half hour recess and come back in closed session.
You have a motion?
Thank you.